Andy. Every once in a while, I see there at the call center.
Burn.
Don't make sure you take a piss.
We save your dogs a few times.
Or the girl we were. And you're going to be camped out or you're going to be anchored out somewhere. You don't want to battle up to it.
Yeah.
I'll be darned, I'll be darned enough to keep that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, she hasn't left yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, when did they go? Is it September? That is that?
Yeah, I didn't realize about their chasing.
Yeah.
They're rolling to Chicago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There has.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was kind of, why are you leaving September?
Well, you don't want to, too. You're not in hurricanes, you know, the hurricane season. This what, September, November, is that right?
No, it's like now today, end of September.
Yeah.
There's no way to know, remember, it's already started. She's gonna have to skirt a little. She said she'll go the opposite way if she gets bad weather.
Got through all of them, all of them?
All right.
The only thing we didn't, we got through all of them in there. That we had, we ended, we're gonna, you can see, we get stuck on. So we just skipped over, I think it was only like four, but we got through everyone.
I don't know. I don't know.
All right, folks, at seven o'clock, so we're gonna start the meeting. So we'll start off with all the order and fledge of allegiance. All right, roll call of PC members. Here.
Jacobson.
There.
Dig Young.
Go, go.
Here.
Eaton.
Here.
Here.
Here. And Dig Young is excused.
Yeah, he's ill. Okay, declaration of conflict of interest for anyone pertinent to our agenda items. Does anybody have a conflict of interest? Be a note from this side of the table. How about you folks? Anybody have a conflict of interest? All right, moving on, we're at public comment. So any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the PC in public comment. And it will be carried out with the following rules. Comments shall be directed to the planning commission, which chairs, with questions directed to the chair. Any person wishing to address the PC shall speak from the lectern here or via Zoom by raising their hand. Persons may address the PC on matters that are relevant to the township planning and zoning issues. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluded the time needed to answer PC member questions. And comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. So is there anybody in the town hall that would like to make a public comment? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Michael Sherman. I'm here with my wife, Tanya Sherman. We're at eight five nine six Church Street, Millbrook property. And I just wanted to basically update the PC. I've been in front of you for an informal statement, I guess, regarding what we're doing on the property. And I just wanted to give an update between working with previous zoning administrators, Deb currently, and then working with a team, including my engineers and architects, Awal Mabi, environmental engineers, Gordy Frazier, and Nathan Elkins, who's a historical consultant on historical properties. And then currently with Doug Mansfield, we are moving toward a submittal. And because of where we're at, it's been suggested by Deb that we do a preliminary review with members of the PC, an informal preliminary review. And that's, I guess, what I'm requesting, her suggestion. And we look forward to continuing working through the submittal and hopefully getting constructive feedback before the submission takes place. And then that, and that effort and spirit, we want to try to rectify any potential problems in this middle beforehand.
So can I ask, what's the timeframe in which you'd be prepared to make your presentation?
Uh, the preliminary review or the formal?
The preliminary one that you?
Uh, I would say we would be able to have a meeting within maybe two weeks. We could do that within two weeks. So maybe not next week, but the following week would be a great, great week to schedule that.
Is there any feedback from the PC on timing of a preliminary review? I mean, you haven't really explained how extensive this would be with this involved.
I mean, how long a meeting do you think it would be?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, we're trying to navigate the process. Again, the property has, as I stated, when, when I kind of openly discussed this, there is a lot of unique variables for the property that we've done our best, and our best, you know, I just have. And my experience is evaluating properties. I uniquely am a developer. We don't want to develop the property. It's our home. It's our forever home. But at the same time, there's, there's different uses on the property that, and the complexity of which, and some of the, I would say gray areas that trying to navigate ordinance as it's written now, as you're updating ordinance, and, you know, all, all the things that surround the property. All my professional consulting and, and feedback from my, my team has been, this is, I think, the best step forward. And without trying to describe what we're trying to do, I wouldn't, I'd rather not do that in, you know, an informal. You know, I only have three minutes. So, so I don't think I can effectively explain the complexities without, and that's why I think Deb, Deb came over and visited us right when she started. Bob had been guiding us before that, and so she came over to the property, saw it. We kind of told her what we were doing, updated, kind of tried to get her up to speed on what we had already been doing. Because I've been working for over a year on the, the different plans and layouts, surveys, engineering, all the things that we're, we're doing to really, again, renovate the property, respect the his historical importance of the property, and then really bring the property together as a master plan, um, estate that, that's not in conflict of anything. We, we don't want, we didn't want to do less than more. Okay, I did, I want to make that clear. We're, I'm not trying to, everything I want to do is for the property not to sell or develop or anything like that. But it's a large property and it has large untouched parts of it that we do want to improve. And we want to be sensitive to how we do it.
I have a question. What you're saying, what you're saying is just, your question is special meeting to go over the, go over this stuff in about, in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
And I think if we had this stuff to look at ahead of time, that's up to Linda.
I'm, I'm seeing.
Great, that's all you needed to say.
This is a preliminary. This isn't a special use. This isn't a special meeting. This is a preliminary. Normally, I sit down with somebody, they come in with a project and we just talk about it. This unique property, I want a couple of you involved in that preliminary meeting. It's not going to be before a group like this. This is going to be like in my office.
Oh, they're gonna come.
I need a couple of volunteers, maybe Randy Philnick, maybe a couple other people that, because we've got a PUD section, we've got a residential area, we got farming, we got barns, we got ponds, we got.
I'm on to.
But I'm just wanting a couple of people, and if you want to be the one to appoint them, fine. But I want to make sure that before anything's presented to you, that a couple of you, myself, maybe Randy, that we go through all of our ordinances, make sure that we've covered all of our bases, and that we have them put together the right package to come to you. And so that's why this is one of those preliminary, based on our ordinance, that a couple of you get involved in that preliminary, and it may be you, Linda, just from that standpoint. But whoever wants to, whoever feels that they're best, the most valuable.
Say one, one.
But, uh, but I would like to get a couple of people with me, because I kind of think it's going to take a village to do this one. And I want to make sure we don't miss any components and that what comes to you is prepared and ready for you to actually review.
I don't think I've.
Because I don't want to.
I'll volunteer.
Be ready to help.
So, but Linda's come. That can be a discussion item later, but basically, this is all preliminary. This isn't a, this is not a special hearing. This isn't anything like that. This is a preliminary, back in the zoning office. Let's kind of make sure that we line up our ducks, make sure that we get them to fill out everything they need. Doug Mansfield is just coming on board with them. He's got to get up to speed on the project. And I want to make sure that what we have them prepare and present to you is something that meets everything in our ordinances.
We're on a complete application.
Right.
And that's what these efforts will be.
So we're going to discuss this later, and we will get back with you. I think we can call you tomorrow.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. All right, is there anybody else with a public comment in the hall? Okay, how about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll proceed on our meeting then. The next thing we've got here, just, I want to just touch on this real quickly. Short note in your packet, Acme Township starting their master plan process, so duly noted. Next, we've got Deb, your zoning administrator report.
Like I was just here. It's a, it's a little bit longer, and I just got clarity. Actually, it was kind of good for me to add a couple of columns to it. So I go out and visit every site before I give out a permit, but it's kind of good to know when the project starts. When I go out and I see the forums are actually getting ready to be poured, to double check that the site is where it's supposed to be. And so three extra columns are being added to the categories. One for did the site get visited, has the project been started and is it completed? So, but we've had a busy summer. So if anyone has any questions, let me know. Seems like everybody wants storage right now. Any questions about zoning?
No, Deb, you're doing a great job as far as I'm concerned. Just fantastic job.
I appreciate. Okay, um, I skipped over a minute, so let's back up here for a minute.
Me also skipped over the agenda, because aren't we gonna postpone number seven down the road?
Okay, I apologize. Yes, I jumped ahead. So why don't we back up to setting and adjusting the meeting agenda? Are there any changes to the agenda?
Just Keith's not here, so maybe eliminate unfinished business D to September?
Uh, no, that's already in the packet, even though Keith is not here. I helped do that for him, so we'll keep that.
I didn't know if you wanted to do with him not here or not, so.
I don't.
I'm good with that.
Any other changes? Okay, now let's move on to the meeting minutes. Which should be page three in the packet, meeting minutes from July 10.
Correspondence. Says correspondence, Kim Mangus should really correspond to.
That was, I think, the previous meeting, yeah.
And then it says, discussed during agenda item. It did not get discussed. I would like that to be mentioned somehow, in order of some kind of aid.
Right, we ran out of time because we didn't discuss the master plan at all.
Right.
Correct? So that should probably be.
Yeah, it, it, the way it reads, it kind of looks like we're going to address it later, but we never did. And it, it doesn't say anywhere that we never got that.
Right.
It just seems like we should make some type of a note for clarification. We didn't actually fit to that.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of correspondence, it should, it should say something to the effect of.
So she didn't really share correspondence. She submitted correspondence, correct? It was in the packet, in the meeting before she did share it. But, but then she actually provided the written correspondence as a follow-up.
So, oh, so the written didn't show up until last week? Okay, so that, that corrects me.
So.
It seems like we should make some type of note that we didn't actually get to discuss during the.
So would it be okay to just say under correspondence? It can just say Kim Mangus, that's fine with a period, but then.
Discussion was.
Right, is everybody okay with that? Did you catch that, Lois? It wasn't really an agenda item. It was correspondence. But, but how I recall it is Mike said he wanted to discuss it, and we were going to discuss it during the master plan. But then we ran out of time because it was 11:00 PM, so we adjourned the meeting. I know it's kind of conorted.
Discuss during master plan agenda item.
Right.
Maybe that would be clarification.
That's kind of what you said in the second sentence, so. So maybe you could say, we'll discuss during master plan agenda item. Yeah, number three, and then it would show postponed later. Does that work, Mike?
Yeah. Then on page two. Two, three, four, five, down. Let you discuss each of the individual changes. Is step the right word?
What, you're thinking of look through or?
Read through.
And if it's, if it's just me, say something, you don't have to change it out. To me, that read.
Yeah, I think it should be prefaced by something like planning commission stepped through or.
But progressed through.
Reviewed, yeah.
Planning commission reviewed.
Yeah, that's better, thank you.
And you have to change discuss to discussed. Yes, ten seconds. Will you, or we just discuss?
We've been discussed.
So in that same area, it says several items were tagged for further review in the August meeting. I think it's important that we list the items that were tagged for review. And I think we had about a half a dozen of them. And then Randy, in this month's packet, did summarize the, those items.
Yeah, I'm embarrassed, so some of the changes noted are, and there's your six, seven.
Adult folks to care dwellings and versus dwellings versus roadside stand definition. Are those the six you're talking about, Linda?
I'm getting to that point. Okay, some of the changes noted. I guess, did we get them all here, Randy?
There's probably a few more. It's on pages two and three of my, or four of my memo.
Maybe move the, some of the changes noted up to the, under the sentence, several items were tagged for further review. Definitely, and notes.
Yeah, I think you can grab these out of page 13 in the packet. I guess the button breakfast.
Someone misses them?
Well, there was this side yard setback situation. She did get the thing about the. Guarantees, she got them and then. What do you guys think? I mean, I feel like we're holding things up here. Well, nothing there, I think.
We just put et cetera, or?
Well, she, she does have the words, some of the changes are noted. She does have. Yeah, button breakfast, firm definition, the lot width. She has that whole discussion we had about lot versus parcel. I think lot width is missing on this. She's got the table four dash one noted in there, which is a big bunch of it. We're going to talk about this roadside stand thing. All right, so do we want to add the lot width in there? To me, that seems like the big one that's missing there. In this, this list of items, you have some of the changes are known. That, that's fine, yeah. It doesn't have to follow the same order as what Randy. All right, anything else? So I have a motion to approve these with the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve this change.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post. All right, back on track now. Chair's report, I just dropped off something really quick to each of you. This is a little time sensitive. Michigan Township Association has this thing called hot topics in planning and zoning. There is a class offered August 28th in Cadillac. It's like a, probably about a six hour commitment with travel time, registration, and dinners at four o'clock in Cadillac. Classes from five to eight. This caught my eye specifically because the hot topics for this month are short-term rental regulations, right aways, recommendations for handling hot potato topics and conflict of interest. To make sure everybody knows their, their role. So the question is, is there is a discount if we do this soon? The date here, there was a, yeah, you have to register two weeks early, so by August 14th in order to get $50 off. I did call them. I couldn't register online, but you know, if you call the MTA, they'll help you out. And then Deb, did you find out that there's some group rates too, if a number of us might?
I, I looked at his other book for each person, so I looked at, was it greater? It said actually there were all the 50 people, but they had the MTA numbers. And I could find that this Carl, Heidi, now.
Must have been you registered for something previously or something.
Yeah, you gotta sign up and register.
I think my gal Carl and Heidi were the only ones that were online on MTA. So usually the guests, Township, she's in the board, updates the current member list with MTA. So that you're online, that they actually can go in and.
So when I contacted the MTA, they, I didn't try and launch the link because I wanted to talk to you guys tonight first. But they set me up right away to be able to do it. So I think if you call the helpline, they will set you up. So is, is anybody interested? I thought with, as much as I've heard, particularly the short term, caught my eye for sure. If they have any best practices, I think it's important that at least some of us attend those.
Deb and I are going.
Yeah, I heard that. So is, I was looking kind of to the rest of the people if they were interested.
Is the hundred dollars with the discount, or when you registered, you registered early, was it 50? Or is it 150 with the $50?
You know, that wasn't really clear to me. I'm not sure.
Early bird rates and, and two weeks prior to each event.
Yes.
So it's probably 50 bucks. So usually with the MTA, they bill themselves.
I think it's a hundred bucks.
Okay.
I, I tried, feeling it is going to be a hundred dollars each, and that was a review.
Okay, so I'm thinking you were getting the early bird rate.
Sounds to me like it's 150.
Yeah.
Food is not cheap.
Right, okay, so I think I'm going to register if anybody else is interested. You know, if you just communicate with us, we can probably carpool down there. If you're interested, okay. Any other discussion on this? Nice, it's close by. All right, Heidi, do you have a township board report? Nice, it's close by. Alright, uh, Heidi, do you have a township board report?
Pretty good one right now, because right now the agenda's held up due to lack of the clerk's information because of the elections. Um, short-term rentals will be addressed by the zoning administrator. Please start your homework with defines it and how does it meet the needs of the greater good in master plan.
Okay, um, Carl, any ZBA news to share?
No, uh, have a snap, been in any meetings.
Okay, no activity, alright. Alright. Randy, we're up to you on the zoning map update, next steps with the county.
So, what was it, our last week that we met with Josh at Grand Travers County GIS Department? You recall that we had all the work done by Scott McLean, he presented us with his results. He then also gave us the digital files that he created following the legal descriptions. And so he gave us that in digital form that was taken to the county. And with the idea of having a zoning map, we did that last week and Josh at the county was able to turn it around pretty quickly and we have a draft of that now, and I had it blown up to very large size.
Oh, I love that size, thank you.
Do you wanna cheer?
Not necessarily visible to everybody, but this is not, this is not done yet either, though there are some changes that need to be made. Yeah, we don't have our free name in there, there's some other notations that are missing. But. So, all of our zoning, just to remember, when you mentioned there, there's other notations that need to be made, and I wanna double check some of the categories here to compare it with the material that he provided to us. For, and then also work with Deb on that, but there's some progress now on zoning maps. This title is what matches your text, so is your zoning map, it'll be identified by signatures from the supervisor clerk. We'll have a list of amendments when we even know that you're working at, working on the most current zoning map and then. So, disclaimers are here, they'll have to be reviewed by our attorney, make sure it's proper, and then Grand Travers County included there disclaimer there as well, so. Also progress?
So, the big thing here is just cleaning up some of those little details, right, and adding the road names?
Yes, that's the issue, is the road names are obviously missing, we can add that in there, so there's, there's clarity with that, this can probably be shrunk a little bit. The alpha better. This is just the first draft of this. And not much to do to change it, except just, I wanna double check again, like I said, what he gave us before in this.
So, I just have one suggestion, is when you have this change log on the bottom, I like having that. But sometimes it's nice, you've got amendment number, y- you might wanna put a sh- a small description and maybe the section number that it's on. It, it makes it, you know, when you do technical drawings typically, they identify the area of the drawing that was changed, just to kinda help a little bit. Just the kind of a simple thing, a little bit more, and I agree, I'd rather see more words in the change log than, um, the key there couldn't be shrunk. To accommodate that.
Doesn't look like a spaghetti bowl anymore.
Yeah, you compare that to your other map here, this is
big difference, obviously.
Nobody can see that, Randy.
Alright, you can plot whatever scale, but this is, you know, okay, this is just a PDF of what was in the master plan from two thousand fifteen.
I, I'm, the yellow line, uh, on the official zoning map, uh, versus, uh, what, it was, it's a different color code. What is that, what are those? Is that the outline of the, like, ag district or the outline of the residential?
This stuff?
Yeah.
The river.
So it's, so the current zoning says it's, it's R one within, I think, three hundred feet of the center line of the streams.
Yes, okay, so you're going, those are the streams, okay.
And then it's a thousand feet from the lake shore. Oh, that's one location you wanna end, so.
So is there a reason the center line of the stream isn't shown? Because I think it was more intuitively obvious on this one, because the blue was there, I'm just wondering. Okay. Alright. Any other questions for Randy on that?
Again, we just got that Monday, so we haven't really had a chance to do much with it, but we had a, like I said, a good productive meeting with Josh and Al and I, and, uh.
So you think by next week, or next month, that we'll finally be on a rap with us?
Yep. I wanna sit down with Deb and make sure that she's, that this conports with what she has, right?
Do you have any comments?
No, not yet.
No, that would be great if you could review that with Deb, just make sure she doesn't catch anything else, since it's her tool, right?
Oh, yeah, that is her.
Yeah. Alright. Alright, so the next thing was to circle back to the zoning ordinance update, so we already looked at some of this during minute review. So the first thing was Heidi, you and Keith had an action item to, um, answer some questions about co-pud.
Correct.
And record tracing.
Hold on, I got my notes sitting here somewhere for you.
Can you tell us your status on that?
Okay. For the co-puds, more research is needed to find out how it happened to be factual. In the meantime, I made John a worksheet, so we can all figure this co-pud out together. Um, it, because it's a complex issue, there's a lot to be done, we gotta work as a team so that we all come to the table prepared and know what it is. So what I did was, I made you a worksheet. So we'll pass this worksheet out, and it's just basically asking you to define a co-pud, know where to find the definition of a co-pud. Look in the master plan and see what people said about a co-pud, um, and how do we fix it as a goal. So I'm gonna give everybody a copy of this, and next month, everybody will bring it back, and then in the meantime, I'm gonna go to the research department of minutes and ordinances. I'll keep working on my end, but I need some help, guys.
So, we're only looking at the bottom half of this paper, not the top half, right?
Well, yeah, I also.
Talked about.
Right, but I also want you to, if you can, to find short-term rentals, because we didn't have a meeting, so I'd like something, if we're gonna talk about short-term rentals, and Deb's gonna bring it to the board and it's gonna come back here, I'd kinda like to know what your opinions are. If you don't, if you don't have an opinion, leave a blank. We gotta figure it out together, you guys.
And just to clarify, you were researching.
Minutes.
An example of a co-pud.
Yes, I was.
Commercial, do you do?
And if you wanna take the ones off the maps, fine, but if you take the ones off the map, then you're gonna have to go into more detail. To find out why, or what, or how it happened, but there actually is a checklist, I wanna see if anybody else finds the checklist. And I gave you some hints already, I left one off for you. Which starts with a V, and is Carl's department.
Okay, any?
That's all I got.
Any questions? Alright, uh, next, uh, oh, this is my favorite activity, table four dash one. So, we were asked to look at this really carefully and compare this to the existing zoning ordinance, so when I pulled that up to do it myself, I found I got a April twenty seventeen chart in the zoning book. And, uh, what Randy asked us to do is to compare these line by line to make sure that we identify any problems. So I think this shouldn't be too bad to look through. Back apart. So you should be to do this little thing on page ten, and I do apologize, at least on the printed version of.
Super dark. Oh, I could, I must have been giving you a little.
Well, I know this table kinda moves around a little bit because it goes back and forth between the track changes and the not-track changes, so it slides the table each time, so obviously the final version won't have these problems with the numbers not being all aligned.
Okay. So, one of the first things I noted, just in the column headings, is most of, uh, almost all of these were labeled as square feet, which is what the column headings had, but there's a couple that are noted as acres buried in there, it's the RC one and the MHP.
And it also says minimum lot area. Does that make a difference?
No, it's just there's are different units, um, square feet and acres. So I just didn't know if, if you should note their square feet or acres in the top heading, just because you have a couple, only two of them are noted as acres. Does anybody else have any concerns with just like the, the format, the cross the top headings and the, and the horizontal headings?
And obviously the A one is forty thousand square feet, now, there's a zero missing, but it came off the.
Oh, you're right, I missed that one. Yep.
Well, you just said some of your zeros don't align, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them are wrapping on you.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, did anybody have any concerns in the first two or three rows at the top? I didn't see any problems there. So, if we just drop down, the first time I saw a problem was the C one under the minimum front yard, it says fifty, and then, um, it looks like it was, uh,
Oh.
it, the footnote's in the wrong place, it needs to just be raised up a little bit, just a little clarif- thing. But then, something was, that was of larger concern to me, this forty percent max building coverage that said C footnote nine, and.
There is no nine.
I see no nine.
It was my only problem.
I'll have to check that after.
So, hang on, let me just see it. So.
I was gonna look and.
So, so just so you know, on this original one from April of twenty seventeen, I do see the same thing, forty percent max building footprint. Um, but there is no footnote on that, on the original. I wonder if this has something to do with. Remember you talked about the difference between footprint and max building coverage? I don't know if you were thinking of something like that on the footnote, of clarifying it, maybe.
I can't recall uphand, I'll have to just check that.
Okay, alright.
And A exists on the other one, but no nine. I'm working draft.
Alright, so the next thing that I found a little tough was these village things, because when I looked at the original from April of twenty seventeen, I don't see any of these village callouts, so I don't know if I'm just not looking at the right, if it's somewhere else in the zoning ordinance, but on this twelve point eleven schedule regulations, I, I don't see village, so I just really wasn't sure what to say about those requirements. It looked reasonable when I read, read the numbers, but I, I wasn't really sure.
I think last time there was a problem with the lines or the columns cutting off, and that's, it was extended then.
I thought that was at the bottom of the document. I think it was the wrong thing.
That was V one and.
So I'm just looking at this really old document, I hope.
Oh, okay.
Copy.
Well, that's, that's.
This old thing.
What page is that, by the way?
It says twelve point eleven schedule of regulations. Can you bring my whole book? So I assume it's in section twelve.
I can address that now, I believe, because we had, this was another example of information in two different places, where under the, in the old ordinance, we had a separate zoning district called V, and the lot size requirements were, was in eight point six two, rather than having all of them in one place. So that's why you don't see it on the existing chart. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, anybody double check that stopper? I mean, I looked at it, they made sense to me, what they were saying.
So, so that information was just moved from eight point six two to the chart, so that it doesn't make much sense to have eighty percent of the standards in one place and twenty percent somewhere else.
Oh, I agree. Okay, so that, that's interesting, so this is. Alright, thanks for the clarification. Um, the only other note I had on this page was the last item, the, the mobile home, or, yeah, the mobile home there. Um, earlier in the definitions, it just clarified that square footage would be at, as per the manufacturer's declared measurement. I think it was early in the definition section, I didn't know if you needed a footnote there to just remind people of that. Because sometimes when you just see a table, people wanna get out there with their tape. Because sometimes when you just see a table, people want to get out there with their tape measure. That makes sense?
I'm not following you.
So under MHP, mobile home, you go to the far right hand column where it says minimum dwelling floor area. And earlier in our definitions, it said that you use the manufacturer's declared measurement of square footage. I'm just wondering if it's worthy of a footnote there. The bad thing about that, maybe you could just refer to the definition page. That way you don't have to keep updating two things. Um, I know you're trying not to have same information in two places.
Right.
But it just kind of caught my eye that that's an anomaly of that specifically, or may maybe just a footnote that says see the definite.
So you put or refer to.
Push it, push them right back to the definition. I just think it might be helpful if we end up with.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That makes sense?
Yep.
You've been referred to.
Yeah, so we don't want to redefine it. We just want to push them to the definition. Say if I have anything else on that top section prior to special situations.
And then you're gonna add the footnote that's missing, right?
Number nine.
Number nine.
Are you are you still on the top?
On the top section, so these are primary dimensional requirements.
Uh, when you get to the minimum width, maximum depth ratio, 1.4.
Yeah.
Four to one.
Yes.
Okay. Nowhere, the state regulation 109 says that that only applies to item lots under 10 acres. It does not apply to anything over 10 acres. And the township has can change that, but they have to specify that somewhere in there that it also applies to whatever all, and ours does not say anything like that, so it can be I use this terrible word, assumed that it does not apply to anything over 10 acres. There's been a lot of discussion of that. Last August, we brought it up, and I asked our township attorney, which does it or does it not apply? And I I don't, I don't know what he said. It was gobbledygook, so I have to say that.
And the CBA.
It doesn't say that it applies to everything over 10 acres, so it does not apply to anything over 10 acres. And in every case that's come up before the CBA, the people that were challenging that they weren't allowed to build because it was over 10, over 1.4, they have been granted a variance because in every case, it was not their doing. They didn't subdivide that property in such a way that made the
Not look for.
Uh, ratio. You know, not mating the ordinance. So we have no choice. They the they did not create the problem. They would be given substantial justice by giving them the variance and so on right down the list. So we have no choice when that comes up.
Someone give them a clarification, please.
Tell you that it applies.
Okay, so hang on.
It's just been a sore point for years, and somewhere along the line, if you if we wanted to apply to plots over 10 acres, we have to say that somewhere, a little footnote doesn't matter. We don't say that.
I think this all says one to four, which is the same thing that our existing chart Schedule of Regulations shows. A lot of these, no, wait a minute, let me finish, minimum lot square foot area. You know, these are smaller lots, as you can see, there is only one that says minimum five acres in RC, which doesn't apply to what you're saying.
Right.
And then this mobile home park, 17 acre minimum. However, I thought that the the division ratio was contained in the land division ordinance.
It is.
Different ordinance, correct?
Ordinance 26.
Ordinance 26.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm not, I hear what you're saying, Carl, but I think the issue of the over 10 acres, I believe, is addressed in ordinance 26, land division. This is.
That's right.
You guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I think these are dimensional requirements for, you know, erecting a single family residence R1, so it's for all these zoning classifications that match up to this map. And I realize that there could be stuff in this A1 area that's bigger. Although this right here is really addressing putting a residence on the property, right? In A, that's what this is talking about, the 200 feet width lot, talking about minimums. So I think the the actual plot of land as far as they've got these, this one to four reference, but then I think the stuff for the larger parcels that you're talking about is in the land division ordinance.
It is.
Read it. It does not apply over 10 acres.
Earl, please read.
According to, we could, we could make it apply, but we have to specify that. And I've read that this, I'm talking about the state, and ours doesn't say anywhere on here that it applies to anything over 10 acres. Doesn't answer 10 acres at all.
So is it fixed, Carl, or just clarify?
I mean, that's where we run into a problem.
I don't have.
CBA.
Even even in 26, it doesn't say that, Carl?
Or even in 26.
26 thousand.
That's what I saw.
Okay.
Four to one.
So in the interest of time, in the interest of time, I would suggest.
I'm just saying, that's something we need to consider, straighten it out so that that it doesn't keep coming up.
Well, I would suggest that we circle back to this, but we need the documents in front of us.
No, I agree.
Very productive without the documents.
Just pointing it out that that was brought up at that meeting, and I didn't get a straight answer from our attorney.
But it doesn't mean it's right or wrong, then. You didn't get a straight answer.
We should be able to just put that on maybe on next month's agenda and give it and make it an item and just go over it. We should be able to clear that.
It would be helpful.
Yeah, we should be able to take care of that.
So let me make sure I got this captured, add ordinance 26 review, which is land division.
And I would also like you to review the citizen planner on land division.
26.
You can supply that documentation.
I can supply that documentation, no problem.
So ordinance 26 for land division, and we're specifically.
I think it's 109B or something like that.
But I want to make sure, Randy, I'm not missing something. This chart's intention is a schedule of regulations when you're dividing for an R1, single family, R2, single family. I mean, this is, this is not just farmland. This is, I'm going to put a residential structure as I get down.
Well, it applies to, that applies to all the districts here. You see A1.
Yes. Order of the districts. So this is in addition to the land division rules. And I agree with Carl, the information should be consistent, correct?
It should, and I, this is the way it is in the current ordinance now with everyone one to four. My preference when they started, when I, I know this is a sensitive issue, but my preference would be to say have in that footnote that it's also that not just variance provisions comply with the width to depth ratio, but but all provisions have to comply with with four to one. I mean, what I'm saying is that if 10 acres is exempt from four to one or one to four.
Okay.
Yeah, then that ought to be highlighted in footnote eight, so that you know that you don't have to meet one to four if if you have a larger parcel. I I've not looked at that ordinance 26 at all myself.
You get like a footnote can't would state that, you know.
So footnote, that you, Heidi.
Yes.
Please do not talk at the same time as the people are speaking. Thank you. Variance provisions, this footnote eight. Was that footnote already in our zoning ordinance?
I believe so.
Buried in there? Okay.
That's what various number eight says, the depth ratio is in 26.
Section 1211, number five.
And the thing is, it might not be in there, directed.
Yeah, it's it's existing language.
Okay.
So it was just moved. So that's not new. It's it's existing. It's just.
And Carl, if you have some reference information too, if you can provide that to me by the package due date, so we can have all of the information in front of everybody. Is that fair?
Yeah, and we should, we get everything together, we should be able to.
Okay.
Go over and fix that.
All right, so that will be important. Everybody knows that homework. Okay, can we move on to special situations? Are we ready for that section of the table? Does anybody have any concerns on this section of the table?
Which one's that?
Um, it's the second grouping of stuff. It says special situations. So the first portion was primary dimensional requirements for the zoning districts, and now this is special stuff. So it starts off frontage on the Boardman River. So.
So I don't know if you want to bite this off or not, but you remember about six months ago, we talked about supply road and the setbacks of 150 feet on supply road, which didn't make a lot of sense. That's such, that's an excessive amount of setback.
Yeah.
But I don't know what we do about that until we would have time to investigate. That seems to be, that seems to be a change.
There was a state requirement, how that went. There was a, that was something to do with the state had that, and wasn't it?
It's a frontage issue.
It was a, it wasn't, wasn't within our control, I didn't think.
No, it's something about the the classification of the road, but it must be.
For a frontage.
It ends our township line, because as soon as you head towards drivers' farm, there there's houses way closer than 150.
It's almost like they're gonna wind the road, so they ask the subject.
Because the whole road isn't that way. So there is something a little wrong.
There was an intent that I think that there was an intent that never happened, so and so it probably get rid of it.
I don't, I, you know.
I just think that that's a change.
It might be there for, it might be there for widening of the road. Could it be there for the widening of the road, down the road?
You could put three roads in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it was for winding road or something like that, it's a whole road, not just the section in our town.
That's a little weird.
Right, so there's something walking with that, and that's like Lynn says, that's gonna take a lot longer to to fix and straighten that out, and it probably isn't something we need to be spending time on at this moment.
Right.
I think you could fit an interstate in 150 feet.
All right.
Do you think it might be in the deep restrictions of the subdivision?
No. No. All right, so the one thing I noticed, though, is these minimum side yards, they're in they're supposed to be the front yard. They're in the wrong column, and I don't know if that's just because of your your track changes and all that stuff. Again, this 100 feet, 150 feet, 30 feet. It's under the side yard setback column, but it should be in the front yard setback column.
And that's like down closures for livestock stuff?
No, it's the, it's this, it's the thing. It says minimum side yard feet. It's the fourth column, and it's just, you know, maybe you can fix it on this version. Hang on. Randy, you fixed it, right? I was looking at an old copy when I copied this.
But is that.
An upside.
What she's saying is this had applied to.
Yeah, that's it. Getting this eventually.
If it's, if you're at the side of your lot sign, what the water, are you the front or the rear line mine? Is that?
What about the side yard setbacks to the E, not to the foundation, just specify? But side yard setbacks, is it to the E of the property or is it to the foundation?
So I think we're getting things mixed up. These, these marks, okay, it starts with M72 in the A1 zone, so it's like the last line on there. If you look at the chart and the way it goes up, they've got 100 feet on minimum side yard setback. When I read that, I thought it belonged in the column of minimum front yard setback. Am I right or wrong on that? Is it really supposed to be in the side yard? Because I thought it looked like it was a front yard setback, but maybe I'm just all wrong.
And M72 C1?
Yeah, so you you have to go back to the original, this M72 in the A1 zone. So M72 in the A1 zone, here's the original one, and it's under.
Let's see it on the.
No, right here. But it's hard to see it.
The front yard. Now you come down to this, this one, two, three.
This.
It's that just. It looks like it's.
Okay, Randy, we're on this page, okay? Yeah, on the bottom.
Yep.
And this 100 that's in there, and it's under minimum side yard column heading. When I pull out this thing, it says it is the front yard.
Well, it just, if you just, if you count over, it is in the minimum front yard. It's only three squares over.
But it lines up with this.
Well, but you gotta, you gotta count the headings.
Yeah, you do, because you're not lying down.
Okay, you guys, then then I I gotta say, you you should, if it's going to be different, so you're saying that there's three headings, so that is in the front yard position.
Yeah.
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 But it it graphically is a, that that's misleading. So I would say either repeat your headings or or start a new page, maybe. Something needs to be more.
I think what does it is is up here, you've got that white verbiage here on these, and that kind of throws off the things. But like Mike said, we could make a note, make possibly a note directing you up here, but it'd be hard to do and still maintain this.
But I think the whole thing will fit on the page fine if you just take all this crap, put it on the next page and put the headings back across. I mean, that's what I would suggest. This is way mistaken. Does that make sense, Randy? I know we're waving our hands like crazy.
Right, well, they they don't line up on the original one either.
Yeah, it just, so just, well, wait a minute. Mine does. Just reading. Mine lines up with no problem.
Front, side, and rear.
Mine.
You have to, yeah, you have to count the squares.
But this one is real clear. It's 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 not jogged off. It's right there.
So these two frontages.
I view this as a formatting issue that you can decide. I don't think we have to tell you how to draw.
So so the 100 foot.
Yeah.
Only applies in the front yard.
Okay.
Right.
My concern is on the graphic of this, if this is accurate, it's showing up under side yard, so I thought it was a mistake. So I don't like the fact that the headings.
You know, if you wanted to keep that, I guess you could colorize it. Where these had a.
No, I can, I can fix the table.
Or my other question is, I don't understand why, why did the width of the first column on the lower portion get all stretched out? It's it's super wide, so it's it, yeah, it's just jogged off.
And then that throws off the width, the the line of all the other columns.
Does that make more sense, Randy?
Yes, it does. Now, so so the 100 foot only applies in the front yard, right?
Right, but it looks like it's because of the width of the first column after the zoning district suddenly got fat on that lower portion. You see how the width grew?
Okay.
Yeah.
It it throws off your table. All right. I also noted. I also noticed on old seventy two in the C one zone, that's on the next page. On the original zoning ordinance, there was a zero in the side yard. Side yards, minimum structure setback, there was a zero. Seventy two and C one, and that's missing.
Oh.
There isn't anything in the column.
Well, I guess that's the same zero. Again, I don't know. I'm just saying on this one, there's a zero, or no, this one, I got a lot of them.
Yeah, there's your, no, put, no requirement, or just leave it blank?
Well, I guess if, if that holds true, it's interesting that these were left blank in here too. So you're correct, I guess I did, I noticed the zero was missing, I didn't notice that, oh, they might be talking about the same thing. What do you think, Randy? Is that right? So it probably should all, they should either all be zero or all be blank, right? It shouldn't be a mix.
Right, yes.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
I think zero was clear. It doesn't, what it doesn't do, it doesn't leave it to interpretation, because there's nothing there, does that mean I can do what I want?
Well, especially when you look at, everything else has a number in it, right? So it's like the only thing that's missing a number. So do we agree we should put zeros in those? I had no idea you could build on the lot line in those certain zones.
The references in some of this other stuff, too, in that zone.
So you want to see zeros?
Makes it official.
Yeah, there's a zero there. And, and if we had a number in, in everything, then that would. That would show our intent.
So. Under special situations, there should be a number in every, in every box.
I think so. The whole rest of the chart has numbers and everything, I, I agree that it's more clear.
Yeah, it makes it clear, and it does kind of align with some, some of this other stuff, it talks about this zone. And being able to go right to the lot in the side lot lines. But so it would, it would coincide with some verbiage and some other material.
Well. I'm not sure that putting a zero in every box makes sense, if you, for example, frontage under all other lakes and streams, if you put zero. I'm not sure that's what you're. Or zero under M seventy two in the A one zone.
It's, it's gonna be like a lot of zeros.
I think it's.
And all the columns, it'll be. I think that it would distract from the, the reading of the chart.
So there's kind of weasel words in here, it says no structure shall be built within the minimum yards required, except when expressly allowed elsewhere. Okay, so that's like a get out of jail free card.
Kind of.
Okay, so that's, that's the point, yeah, I didn't see that.
I just noticed it.
The regulations for, and I don't. Yep, we've got that language in the new one too. So maybe it's a dash if there's not. Cause all, what you have is, this stuff is modifying what would normally apply if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of the Boardman River. Or if you have, if you have frontage on the Boardman River. So normally, everything above that applies, but if you're, if you're in these situations.
Oh, that's right, so that would make sense, so what these mean are, these are special situations where.
Right.
Like, for example, the front yard. Setback that you have here says a hundred feet from water's edge. In these notes. Runners on other lakes and stream, fifty feet from the water's edge. It's the, oh, and that's interesting, so the reason they group that together is you have to be a hundred feet back from a river. From the Boardman River and fifty feet from other lakes and streams. Irregardless if it's in your front yard, your side yard or your rear yard. That's what that means.
I think that's what.
Yeah, or that's what they intended.
Right.
So it's saying, if you're on the Boardman River, you have that setback requirement from the water. Land use regulated and setbacks, yes. Which is a column that you do not have on the new thing. And then it says two hundred feet minimum lot width.
Yep, I think that's the goal here, is that whether it's a front, side or rear yard, it can't be within a hundred feet of the Boardman River.
Right, okay.
The same is true of Elk Lake or Kegamong or whatever. Yes. So we standardize the terms there, I believe. Rather than water's edge.
Is there, is there an official high water? I can give you an example of that, that a lot of us have. Yeah, property along this section, and the two people took. They're, they're supposed to be a hundred feet, hundred feet, hundred feet, and when the two people on the edge took their hundred feet, it was only seventy five for the person in the middle. But they, they claimed their hundred feet first, when the water was higher, so when the water goes out, maybe, you know, it would have been a hundred, hundred and hundred.
I think that's why they use the word ordinary high water. And I can tell you, like, for example, on Elk Lake, there is a high watermark in the summer, and there is a low watermark. That is not used for anything in the winter. Six inches down.
That were very high watermarks on all the great lakes as well.
And you can see it on the stones. It is obvious where it's at.
So on the Boardman River, it has the same thing to have. I guess it must.
I don't know as much how they treat that, because they always have their spring surge, right, and stuff like that.
Well, there is a high watermark, but if, if things flood, then you go over the lot.
That's different, right?
Yeah.
I think that's why they use it.
And now with them removing the dams where they are. Yeah.
Denise, could you move your microphone closer to you?
Right.
Isn't the watermark on Elk Lake specified, and it's controlled by the dam, and it's different in the summer than it is in the winter?
That, the height of the water is specified by federal regulation, but where it appears on your property is different for every property. Yeah, but you're right, there's a high one in some. Okay, so back to this, Randy, what do we want to do with, so we're a little bit more clear now on these special situations. These are the exceptions or additional requirements. In these certain areas, so, so we talked about lining up column headings, you're gonna fix that kind of stuff.
And I'll put them on two different pages, so it's easier.
I think it's just easier that way. Right. Oh, and it says right here, except for this specific requirement stated, the regulations for the underlying zone shall remain unchanged, so you look at the main page. And then if you have that specific situation described here. Like, here's this livestock one. So one other little thing I noticed, Randy, is the first co, the first row, frontage on the Boardman River, I think there's a stray number three foot. Note on the second column. I don't think it applies to anything, you just need to X it out.
Can you also put a footnote in there about clarifying the setback from the property lines, and either the foundational structure or to the eve of the structure? Not stipulated. That is the other, there's a drawing that says it's to the eve. But it's unclear, and I can't, it should be built into setbacks, but probably shouldn't have been built into setbacks. But it needs to be clear in the ordinance and stuff. It's on, whenever you get around things.
So you're talking about not for this particular situation?
It would go in, but it's not in the ordinance today.
It's not in there today, I mean, I just feel like if we keep tweaking everywhere, we'll be tweaking for the rest of our life. And that is just concerning, as far as slowing down.
So there is a new graphic under yards that shows how to measure side, rear yards. It's, it just says. The space between a principal building and a side lot line. For example.
But does it have a picture of the eve?
It's on two dash twelve.
And I guess where the, the problems just coming in is from the foundation or from the.
Well, some people put two foot each in that overhang, and some people put a six inch or eighteen inch. But I have plans from the zoning administrator who actually wrote on the plans. The ordinance is unclear and allowed for the eve, but two foot eve to be in setback. So it just needs to be clear, so that.
And it is, it is in the setback though. I mean, I, let's say if it's a twenty foot, let's say, so you two foot of it, but you still have eighteen feet left, and the foundation was twenty foot over. Is what, let's say it was twenty foot, but it's to the eve, it was eighteen feet, and that's what the issue would be.
Yes.
You have a fifteen foot side yard setback, you can have two feet of eve in that fifteen side yard setback. Because that's part of the structure, the eve is. And that's what my interpretation is.
And right now, ours is the foundation, or that's not clear.
Doesn't state.
Yeah.
It doesn't state here.
Keep thinking all material change.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, I know.
That would be an easy picture, I would think it would be the foundation.
That goes on the list of stuff to change when we get around.
And we add it to the dwellings and dwelling then, we're good.
No, let's not get off track. Okay, so is that consensus that we are leaving this as is? This thing that she just brought up?
Yeah, yeah. We're not making any changes right now.
Alright. Alright.
I, I just want some clarification, this, on the enclosures of livestock and domestic animals. This footnote, one. That. References you to another part of the ordinance, where it says that chicken coops can be closer than that hundred foot, right? Because chick, chicken coop, we've been all through this, chicken coops can be closer to the front or the side yard than a hundred feet.
That's on section five oh seven. About keeping animals.
Oshers, for life.
Poultry, rabbits, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, where is that? I read that before.
I'm not sure exactly where it is, but I, I've read, and now you're doing all that, we've been through all this, I was small, we, all that.
You're right, it's somewhere.
I've seen it, I've seen it somewhere.
Footnote says, no structure shall be built within a minimum yard requirement, except when expressly allowed elsewhere in this ordinance. So you have to go look it up, but the chicken coop or the rabbit hut. Falls under this footnote number one. Because in the ordinance, it is different, the chicken coop, and I believe that.
I remember reading that too, Mike.
And if this footnote doesn't cover that, then that concerns. Cause I'm not moving my chicken.
Could we, could we put another reference there?
Well, I think the footnote covers it, and that's, I'm just asking for clarification. I think, if I understand how this all works. Footnote says, except when expressly allowed elsewhere in ordinance, and it is expressly allowed somewhere else in ordinance. I couldn't tell you the page number.
Five oh seven.
Hang on, I, yeah, it's, it's right here.
Okay, what's that say?
In keeping of animals, the keeping of domestic animals shall be allowed, provided that the animals are maintained so as to not constitute a public nuisance. Dogs shall be limited to three. Keeping of live, livestock, livestock, including horses and poultry, shall be allowed, provided that the same is kept in a parcel of land. Of not less than two and one half acres. And provided further that all livestock and poultry be properly housed and fenced, so as not to be a public nuisance. And provide that no enclosure or space for the permanent housing of livestock or poultry shall be located near than one hundred feet. The adjoining property line or highway right of way. See, that's wrong, we, we, we passed ordinance somewhere, it's like more like forty feet, do you remember this?
Oh, wait, maybe it's the next one, keep going, Mike, get to the next one.
The keeping of female poultry and rabbits is permitted on parcels of land less than two and one half acres.
There you go, here we go.
Provided that the female poultry is properly housed, adequately contained.
And the rooster's pride.
So as not to be a public nuisance, and provided that no enclosure or space for permanent housing shall be located near than forty feet. From the adjoining property line or highway, so, so footnote number one sends you to this.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell you where to go, but no, it's in the ordinance, so you're okay.
Well, Randy, could we add right there? Could we add a note to just reference that page?
Let's do that right in the table. Like, what's this hundred feet stuff, because that's contradictory to five oh seven.
If you've got a major landhand operation, like Hyde used to have a, like, it's, it's for stuff like that.
Okay.
It, you know, and.
Your rooster can't be crowing.
Right, if you've got a, a twenty, twenty chickens and a couple roosters in there, they don't want that.
Okay.
Real close to the property line, but, like, I don't have any roosters, and.
So his, they're quiet.
Yeah, a hundred feet from, on my property lines, puts the chickens back in the backyard where Mother Nature, you know, everything loves chicken. I, I've had bobcats and coons and coyotes and fox and ox and possums and kitty cats, dog, I mean, everything.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Randy, just put the footnote up.
Let's just, let's take out the hundred feet in those three columns and put C, section five oh seven.
Well, does five oh seven cover all that, or did you read two separate sections?
That was all five oh seven.
Okay, so the point is, is that would be much more clear, because it would break down the.
It's all got to do with the rooster.
A, B and C.
So, so C's.
Quiet.
Refer to that ordinance.
Yeah, because this is, you're right, this is way more confusing.
It's, it's contradictory to what you have.
Especially because it says domestic animals, except house, I mean, this is just back and forth, you're better off with this detail. Alright, that's a really good change.
That'd be a good idea.
So we're changing that to C, section five point oh seven.
The two and a half acres still makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the two and a half acres, that's a little bit. Why don't you put enclosures, structures for. I would just say raising and keeping of animals, and I would get rid of this livestock, domestic animals, because it's all defined in here. And I think it's kind of contradictory when they say domestic animals, and then they put in parentheses, house pets, I mean, I mean, that's a little.
We use the same title as five oh seven.
I'm not an English major, but that seems a little weird.
And then people will have to call and say, am I allowed to have a goat? How about a lamb?
What about my goat that lives in my house?
But, can I have a yak? Is, is this, would that be interpreted as a change to the ordinance?
We're eliminating conflict in there.
Now, you're eliminating, you're, you're eliminating confusion, because this has already come before, this went to the board back years. Because of the roosters, right, Michael?
God, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, it's been way back.
This is loosening requirements for agriculture, I mean, it's, it's, it's making it easier to do and eliminating the conflict in here.
Yeah, so it, it mentions specifically female poultry, but.
On less than two and a half acres too, it makes the mention that you can have that on less than two and a half acres. Where this statement says you have to be on two and a half acres or more.
For chickens.
Female poultry and rabbits, you can be on less than two and a half acres.
Yeah.
And they can. And they can be forty feet within, from the property box.
Now, we had a situation, uh, on Oak Lake property that one of the, uh, families had chickens and they were getting out into other people's property. Uh, and eventually they, they moved. They wanted farm property, so they left. Uh, there was another, I don't know, one summer I heard roosters every morning. I don't know who had them. I didn't really care, you know? We used to raise chickens when I was a kid, so about five thirty in the morning or six, I heard this rooster all summer long. Uh, and what I know is on less than two and a half acres, but I didn't care.
All right. So we took care of this enclosure section. You're almost to the bottom of the page now. So it seems like. Okay. So I think you picked up some of the changes that I had from my old ones. Thirty, seventy-five and one hundred. Okay. Yep. You got those changes.
So you're just gonna add another footnote for C five oh seven.
So I got one more thing.
A hundred two.
You guys okay over there? Okay. So, uh, footnote five. So this is, this is on things about building height. So this is on the max building height thirty-five feet that you see on the top part of the thing, all the way down. Footnote five says max building height thirty-five feet. And then footnote five says or two and a half stories above grade. And then whichever is less, I really, this whichever is less drives me nuts. I, I mean, to me, your house cannot be more than two and a half stories high. So no full third floor. You can only have a half a story on the third level and not more than thirty-five feet. When you say whichever is less, you're talking about stories and feet. And those are two different units. So you can't say one is less than the other.
You, we can't go over thirty-five feet, no matter what size, what height you set your story.
Thirty-five feet max, but then for whatever reason, our zoning ordinance has also said you can't have more than two and a half stories, which to me is two floors above ground. And you could maybe have attic trusses on your roof and you could have a half a story. Or a portion.
So if you had two stories that were twenty feet each.
Yeah.
You'd have a forty foot building.
Yeah. Well, that would be, that would be over, you can't be more than thirty-five feet and you can't be more than two and a half stories.
So how tells a story? We had this conversation before.
No, I don't, I don't know that they are measured. It's just different.
Well, eight foot, uh, uh, eight, an eight foot high room, and then if you put another room above it, the, the first floor is a solid ten feet. And you've got floor structure.
Right.
And you have the ceiling structure, which is the floor structure to the next level. So you've got a two by twelve, it, it's a, probably bare minimum in there to do that. So each story is ten feet on a, on just a regular eight foot house. But look at some of these big fancy houses that we build and work on. Uh, they're, they got ten foot tall rooms.
I was just gonna say, so what do you do with ten foot ceilings? So now you're talking twelve foot.
Well, that's a thirty-five foot rule would kick in.
That, that ten foot, if they got ten foot rooms on two stories, there's no room left for a roof.
Flat roof.
Unless it's flat.
Flat roof.
Well, that's where that thirty-five foot would kick in. Because you can, you can, you can do what you said, but they know they can't go over thirty-five foot.
Do we have the definition of a story anywhere in our definitions?
I think we do.
Do you really?
And then, you know, definition, what's a half story?
Well, like Mike said, they get them on top of each other. They're, they're ten foot.
There is. I don't remember.
But, but ceiling heights have changed all these years. Yeah, everything used to be eight foot. Now these eleven, twelve foot.
These big fancy houses, there's a lot of ten foot. And even if it's ten foot on the first floor and then eight foot on the second floor, you're, you're, you're really maxing out at that thirty-five foot real quick.
So I think we all understand the thirty-five foot max. But at some point, somebody put this in the zoning ordinance or two and a half stories above grade. To me, when I read that, I might've read it wrong. Took me a while to figure it out what they were talking about. I think what they were trying to say is they didn't want you to have three full floors.
Right. You could have a walkout basement though, but it doesn't count because it's on your ground.
Forget about that. Just the three full floors.
Above grade.
They, they don't want the full floors, but they weren't talking about having a short floor at the top. I think they were talking about.
The attic space being.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if you go back to the thirty-five foot, that, that.
I think the thirty-five foot kind of controls it. It's the controlling thing. I'm not sure why they felt they had to say.
You know, if they're like a six twelve pitch on a.
Like why it was such a big deal to say it.
Well, uh, the part that bugs me is whichever is less, if you're gonna allow two and a half stories, then you gotta be able to allow for the the roof to do its job.
Correct.
But that forces you into shorter ceiling heights in the, in the floors, right?
Uh, the thirty-five foot mark does.
Hey, Mike, if you had two stories and a six twelve pitch, would that get you thirty, that wouldn't, still wouldn't get you thirty-five foot, would it?
Well, the eight foot floors, probably not. Eight foot walls, probably not. But, uh.
If you want these.
But, but like, a lot of houses are built on a, like, even when you build a house on crawl space, generally, part of the foundation sticks out of the ground a little bit. You don't want the wood right down next to the, even if pressure treated wood, you don't want it break down on the ground if you can help it.
As the zoning administrator, thirty-five feet at the peak of a gable. No higher, period. I don't care if they want a bunch of four foot sizes. They still gotta meet the building code and the peak of that gable can't exceed thirty-five feet, period. I don't care how many stories they want to cram in, but thirty-five feet to the peak of the gable.
I, and I think we all agree that's really simple, but somebody put in the zoning ordinance, two and a half stories. I just don't like the whichever is less. I think it's kind of obvious. Two and a half stories and thirty-five foot max. I think that's fine. I think you just gotta get rid of this whichever is less.
Yeah, just put thirty-five foot max.
And get rid of footnote number five.
Get rid of footnote five altogether.
Yeah. Well, wait a minute. You can't get rid of what the whole footnote, because somewhere else, and I've read this, two and a half stories stuff. It was, it was somewhere else here.
No, it's thirty-five.
What?
That's changing your ordinance.
What? I thought this two and a half story above grade was.
It does. It comes up in the thirty, it comes up in the thirty-five two family, comes up in the thirty-five. Comes up in the max building heights on all these other pages.
We're not arguing about the thirty-five feet. Yeah.
I understand that. I was looking for number five. I was just looking for footnote fives.
So it, uh, Deb, are you saying that if we took out two and a half stories, that would change the ordinance?
I, I thought the whole idea that you're doing is trying to compile all of your amendments and your existing ordinances and get them all in one place.
Yeah.
So that you can make sure that you've got it all in one place and you've convinced it, so that you know what you're working with, and then go back and make changes to this.
Yeah.
Add clarity or add clarification. Because before I would mess with two and a half stories, I would rather know what's my foundation or my eve or my setback. Or I am not allowed more than a single family dwelling on a piece of property before I can build an accessory structure. I mean, there's other things that would be really critical to my job before I worry about two and a half stories versus thirty-five feet. Because people are gonna, are building all kinds of unique things. Barn dominions are a big thing right now.
Yes, yes.
I just got another plan today that I'll look at tomorrow, so.
Those would be higher.
They're not so much higher. Part of it is because of the garage doors are gonna put on.
All right. But fundamentally, I think you have to go back to, it's my understanding, and I was looking for, I seem to have misplaced it here, my electronic copy of existing zoning ordinance. It says or two and a half stories.
It doesn't say or whichever is less.
It doesn't say whichever is less. I think we need to get rid of that. I think it's confusing.
Okay.
Because I think it, it's just basic, they're, they're saying you can't be more than thirty-five feet. And oh, by the way, you also can't be more than two and a half stories. And that's the end of the deal.
Yeah.
I, I agree with them. Just give them a height and they'll know what they can, they'll have to build within that height, which is plenty of room.
I'm not sure how, I agree. I don't know how this helps, but it's in the existing ordinance, so I don't really think we have the right to strike it.
Safe and.
Just, just get rid of the whichever is less. I'm sorry to cause such a problem, but I find it confusing.
You clarify somewhere in your ordinance about if it is a walkout, that it's an average between ground level and average, right?
So.
I have no idea.
I thought it was from the, the ground level.
Ground level.
Not, not at the walkout level.
No. Cause ground level, the walkout's usually the basement. That would.
Yeah, but in, in some places, they, they take that grade because it grades down. They take it in the middle.
So there have been known to be circumstances where people bring in a lot of dirt, call it the natural grade, and then it's great. They want a view of the lake or, or something like that. So the term I often see is natural grade when, you know, that, so it's not an artificial grade that you're not raising it up five or ten feet.
But that's a futuristic thing, just that.
Yeah, that's another.
I'm not sure that's in there right now, right?
Okay, yeah. That would be a discussion.
Later.
Okay. Are there any other comments on table? Four. Lot of stuff. All right. Thank you for everybody's patience with that. I know it's kind of painful. Randy, we're looking forward to the bigger, better room.
Yep. It's getting better each time.
You guys taught me a lot today. Answered questions. All right. After the agenda. Revisit remaining items. So Randy, the next page, page thirteen of your packet.
Yeah, let me go and just highlight the changes that those are in green. So there's a graphic added to the definitions to show how we measure lot width. You would think that lot width is a simple term, but it's not because roads change and curve and you have cul-de-sacs and all that stuff. So there's a graphic in there now that deals with that. We had some conversation before about lot and parcel, so we have new definitions there for both of those terms. Somewhat interchangeable, but there's a distinction. Oftentimes in the ordinance, it said lot or parcel, so it doesn't really matter.
So do we have to, um, so what you're saying is you provided us kind of a definition here.
Right.
Did you have to change anything in the text of the zoning ordinance?
I went through and searched. Now that we have was one document you can search.
For lot and parcel.
Lot and parcel. And I found, it said many times they were used together, like lot or parcel.
Okay.
Or, but lot was often used in the context of a condominium subdivision or some kind of.
Okay.
Some kind of subdivision, so. Not that much distinction between the two, but there's a little.
So did you actually have to change anything?
No, just added the definitions.
Okay, so you added the definitions.
You're talking about something on page fourteen?
Yep. Top box on the right.
I'd like to just back up for just a second on page thirteen. Uh, I think this might be a typo, Randy, uh, under the adult foster care stuff, in the center column. The, uh, first group there, the bottom little paragraph in the center, it says, uh, it, it was noted that there are also three similar types of AFC homes in Michigan. And, and this is what it says, homes with more than six residents. I think that needs to be less than six residents.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Okay. Yes.
Good one, Mike.
Thank you.
He's our proofreader.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, there was a, table four was fixed a little bit. Obviously not as much. And again, I don't know if this, unfortunately, that the table kind of crunches off my text sometimes if I don't catch it. But we had a discussion about the side yard setbacks in the N one district. And it said like total thirty percent, but not less than, so would like to change that to fifteen, provided that the sum of both side yards shall not be less than thirty percent of the lot width.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So that's better. I did, it's not changed on the document though, so I can do that.
Oh, you.
You did it on the, on the graph.
I did it on the table, but I didn't get it on the text, so I'll do that.
Can we go back to, um, four dash one? Not the table, but this dwellings again, there's some discussion about the terms dwellings and four point oh four. Implication that there's more than one dwelling permitted on a single lot. And the topic of ADUs. I actually saw an advertisement in the last thirty days that said most municipalities allow ADUs. Let me build one for you. And I'm like, like, advertisement from a modular builder. I can't remember where I saw it. I think it was in the ticker. But anyway, my question is, um, you said on here, no current change.
Right. I don't think we had a conclusion at the last meeting.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm still kind of, I had made a note here in my red pen. I mean, should we consult with prior PC members to see what the intent was? I don't know.
Dwelling versus dwellings?
Yeah, and except, so, I mean, I know there's some really old timer type stuff, like old cabins and stuff that were built on people's property a long time ago, but what is the current, I, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what the ordinance says on that.
Yeah, it just says dwelling, right? Or does the ordinance state?
It's dwellings. Almost everywhere it's got dwelling with an S.
And that, that is the question. Like, how?
Your intention may be for dwellings, but when you're defining what's allowed on a parcel, it's a dwelling prior to an accessory structure or whatever. And, but there's some areas that say dwellings on a parcel. But in some people's definition and interpretation, they, they can have more than one home on the property. Just, so it's not one. Now, under intention, it makes sense that in a particular zoning district, and I don't know if I need to get up. Anyway, the, um, but dwellings under the intention in a residential district, it makes sense to have dwellings in a residential district. But on a, but when I'm reviewing a permit and someone says, well, I want to build an accessory structure. And I say, we've got to have a primary residence before you can build that accessory structure. Or sign a performance guarantee that you're gonna have that home built within the next period of time. Um, but some people feel that since it says you can have dwellings on a parcel. I didn't know if it was just a typo or if we do allow more than one home on a parcel because it says dwellings.
What would that do if you put the S in parentheses? Would that imply that you mean dwellings? And then if you're in parentheses, would that mean, we're, we're not seeing one or two? They haven't made their application yet.
Well, if it's a R one, they should only have one dwelling. And if it's an R two, they could have a multi-family dwelling, so, but it's still one structure with two families that live.
Would that do it if we did put the S in parentheses? Would that? Because remember, if you put dwelling, uh, now you're saying, well, now you're saying you can only build one. Well, if you have that throughout your ordinances.
But in, but in residential one, you should only be building one residence.
Is a dwelling and a residence the same thing or home or?
Yes.
So a dwelling is a home, not just a building.
And then defining what a dwelling consists of. So is that a kitchen? Is it heated and cooled? And that's a whole nother item for defining what a dwelling consists of. Because I had someone say, well, I'm gonna build a house, but I want to put two kitchens in it. Or I want to put kitchens at opposite ends. Is that, is that acceptable? Or is that considered like I'm making a house with a apartment in it or? Or is that considered like I'm making a house with an apartment in it or a mother-in-law suite or? So I had somebody fill me in that there's a property out there that could be giving up into four condos because of the way it's tronken inside. But I haven't been to that property yet.
So like, for example, in section four point oh four of his, of our new zoning ordinance, it says R one residential intent. It is the intent of the R one residential district to provide a dedicated space for residential structures, specifically single-family dwellings. So this is where dwellings is used properly, right? But I think what you're saying is there's other areas in here where maybe it's not used properly. So.
When you really get into applying trade permits on a piece of residential property, and it references dwellings, like just below the ten, what what's a permitted use on a property?
So, yeah, let's just continue this discussion. So right below there, same, the next page, it says uses permitted by right, single-family dwellings. So this is where you're saying you're thinking that this is a little problematic.
Single-family dwelling in a residential one in R one, yeah.
Is that the only place that's a problem? Hmm.
Um, possibly. I I haven't gotten a lot of requests for R two or R threes, but I don't have a lot of requests for condos or duplexes. I haven't seen any. I know that there's a few in the community, but that would won't constitute dwellings, and that's where you could put dwelling with the S apostrophe, you know, in parentheses, which would make sense. But it's still one structure, even though it would have two dwellings.
But you're saying if only one is allowed, then let's just put dwelling there, take take the S off. And if two or more can be, then leave the S in parentheses. So it's just a typing, just a.
That's why I thought it might just be a typo, because it's mainly an R one. So anywhere along your waterfront, on your shorelines, you you get one home, one one primary residence.
So can I ask a clarifying question? This problem with this pluralism, is it in the existing zoning ordinance? In it, so so we basically copied the issue over here in our revision.
Well, that's an easy pitch, though.
Isn't considered a change?
Mike, I would like to ask the senior member of the club here, what's your thought on this? Like, what do you think the intent was back in whatever nineteen seventy-five when this was done?
Well, I wasn't paying much attention to zoning in seventy-three or whatever.
Okay, but you got a lot more years under your belt than anybody else.
I I I think she's correct. The intent is in these zones she's talking about, it's just one dwelling is is what the intent is. In other areas, it's different. And then in in your like, I know a lot of places that were built before there was zoning, and there's more than one house on a lot. I had one of those places. So that's a whole different animal. But going forward, not talking about going backward, going forward. So the, I think the intent, if in the, when you make, when they made zoning, is to make one dwelling per lot.
Well, and I think that is correct because that's why they call it single-family.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and when they talk about the 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 description of the R one zone, they talk about single-family dwellings, meaning a grouping of of residences.
Right.
Or a a group of parcels.
Is a zone single-family dwellings.
Family dwellings.
Are allowed. One per lot in this zone.
So uses permitted in this district, single family. Yeah.
I think the intent is one dwelling.
But there are, like you say, before we had zoning ordinances, I know, right?
Grandfathered.
Yeah, but that's grandfathered.
And that's grandfathered, and parents is all that in the past. But this is, I I have a property right now has a single-family residence. He built a workshop. Now it's become a cabin. Now it's two stories. Now he wants to tap into his and put his son out there living in it as an apartment. And then he can tap in with his stuff, and it says in our ordinance, dwellings. And so it's really difficult to write that back. I mean, obviously, he built it without a building permit, so it's never been county requirements for meeting all of that either. Just one more step I missed, but in in researching that for him, I had to go to three places in the ordinance to say, this is why you can't have a primary, a secondary primary, a second primary residence on your property. I had to go to three different places, and then I had to, I made sure I logged in on his zoning permit. This is an accessory structure workshop, not for living, not for bathrooms, bedrooms, sleeping quarters. But then I have to go to definitions. I have to go to the A, and then I have to go to R one because I have to bounce through multiple zoning ordinances to get to that one answer.
So I I think here is the question, trying to wrap this up, is it sounds like it may be prudent for us to address this to make sure that the intent has the proper grammar. I use grammar.
The intent's good. It's defining a what can you, what what's, what's the use?
Losing, yes.
So so my question is, is do we need to do a word search through this to rectify that? Or is that the best way to do that?
Yeah.
And do we need to do anything in the definitions pages?
No, because the way the ordinance is set up, it's cumulative, so it says residential R one should be single-family dwelling. So it's singular, and then.
So our only question is, is do we have this little error anywhere else?
I can search and try to find to make sure we don't.
So that's an important action. All right. So you're going to search? Are you going to do both dwelling and dwellings?
Well, I see where it says single-family dwellings, I'll I'll change that to dwelling and make sure that when you search for dwellings, it's applicable only to.
It's appropriate.
It comes up words. Applicable.
I think that's important to do that because I do think it puts you in a pickle over that.
A real dilly.
I think that was stinker.
Way to go, Doug.
All right. Sorry to cause trouble. And and your thing right here, we're just going to leave this whole roadside stands and farm markets and just leave it as is for now.
The master plan calls for a review of that.
Yeah, I know.
To to make that. So unfortunately, the I was stuck with language. We 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 improve the language of farm market to be consistent with what the state calls it.
Right.
We don't have anything for what roadside stand is.
Is roadside stand a legal term in Michigan?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
It's got different definitions.
Roadside stand, farmer's market, and farm market. There is three legal descriptions. And you would think farmer's market and farm market, I would have thought they'd been the same.
Farmer's market, that's more the run for.
Yep.
Yeah.
They can take their goods, and then the farm market is like a, Mike had his own, oh, from his house or somebody's house, and they're his goods. So but it clarifies the difference.
At least fifty percent. So right now, Randy, we're just leaving that.
Yeah, I think it's a broader discussion, probably something that we should.
It's one of those ones, well.
It'll take some time to really think it through, and and I think the idea was to broaden and loosen the requirements for agricultural farm markets, agritourism and all that, but exactly how to do that and broaden it from what it is now was not really explored.
Fine. Okay, are we done with this section now? Have we gone through everything? Pulled it around the bush?
I think so. We had our issue about parking in our the parking. The requirement.
That whole hard surface thing.
The whole hard, yeah.
Section nine point oh three.
Nine oh three.
Three C.
You had written down there need to investigate local stormwater ordinance, and that this was just kind of a big thing that we'll have to come back to later, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we took the sewer.
So for next month, to summarize, you'll be coming back with hopefully the final official zoning map. And you've got a couple of these housekeeping issues that we beat beat to death here. So so at that point, I would say that we would be hoping that we could then proceed to have the attorneys review it and then forward it to the board, right?
Yep. Well, I the process is the planning. Somebody would recommend this as an amendment. We have a hearing. We have a public hearing. This is an amendment. So then we help, we hold the hearing, make any changes based upon feedback at the hearing, then take action.
Do we have to get that attorney review prior to the hearing?
Typically, yes.
Typically, yes, right? So we really have to define that to them, right?
Wouldn't we want to get the input first, and and then when we're done with it, then turn it over? Because if we get, we know what we want, and and if we get input and we decide to change it, then.
Now the attorney's got to look at it twice.
No, we wouldn't look at it.
So so what's been done in the past? I guess I don't, I don't really think about that. I don't know if.
Do you recall, Mike? At what point do you have the attorney review of like a zoning ordinance amendment? You know, this is obviously pretty significant, but do you do it before the public hearing? Or do you do it after the public?
We should do it before the public hearing, so that we have so that we're clear with the public.
Okay.
So that we've already talked to the lawyer, and we know he, we know what his recommendation is, and we can tweak it, whichever. If we think it, if we think we should follow his advice or or.
Right.
Because you could still be changing it.
Because otherwise, you could take it to public hearing, everybody could say it's great, and then you send it to the attorney, changes it, and you have to redo it.
Yeah, he says this will never fly.
Then you got to redo the public.
Right, so you're better off to work the lawyer first.
It's important to draw a distinction between what the attorney's reviewing and what you're reviewing. I mean, the attorney should be looking at this from purely a legal standpoint. Is this, does this, is there some statute we're not aware of? Is there some court case that prevents, you know, something from happening? You know, the question about the actual standards and the the content of the ordinance is really not a not a legal issue.
That's our decision.
Right.
And he's just looking to see if it's, like Randy said, if it's legal, we don't want him to rewrite our ordinances. We're going to, that's our job. Let him look at it, see if there's a legal thing.
That's been a problem in the past. Right, we've had a hard time getting answers from why he did that.
And and I would say to back up Randy, if he makes a change in what we give him, then tell him we want an explanation on why he changed it. And is there a court case that says, yes, you had to do this, not just because I don't like it, because we don't care if he likes it. This is, we we care about what the township likes and what we decide, and if it's illegal.
Or or if there's some statute or some major court case that happened in the last year that 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 he would know that we wouldn't.
Right.
We can't do that.
That's the kind of thing we want him to look at.
Right, right.
But not rewrite it.
No, 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 no.
We just want him to tell us if it's legal, what we're doing, or.
Is it, yeah, is it defensible? Is there anything here that?
We missed something.
Okay.
I mean.
We just want to know if what we're trying to do is legal.
And and we should make it clear that we're, we know that there's a lot of other issues in here that we're not tackling at this point. We're intentionally skipping over them so we can get this ordinance in some shape that we can work with.
Well, I would say I think our goal should be to to have this cleaned up enough so that we can push that to legal review. And it sounds like we just need to be really clear and communicate with them what the scope of work is. And yes, we do not want to rewritten document that from them. We just want to know if there's any legal problems with any.
Right, if there's anything that's in.
Anything in here.
Or any court cases.
Yeah, and if there is, show us where.
Yeah.
So we can correct it.
Yeah.
Have you ever updated your signs ordinance to be compliant with the state statute? Because that's going to be one that turns up immediately.
Well, I think we know that that was on that list, you know.
That would take a lot of time.
I know, but that's going to be one caveat.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the master plan draft review? Okay, so I I itemized three things to talk about. I thought it was important that we, because these are hot topics again, that we review what we placed in this document regarding short-term rental, egg parcel sizes, and then other items which would include the feedback from Kim Mangus. So I'm open to what order you want to discuss this in, but I know you've all looked at this portion of the master plan in the past. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was still feeling okay about how it looked. So what would you guys like to discuss first? So this kind of centers in on the goal section and the action plans. So I gave you five and six, but I was personally kind of, five was background and community engagement, how you got here, and six was the meat and potatoes of the the principles and the goals.
This stuff for me, when they asked if when they talk about the rural character.
So which principle or which?
Okay, I'm sorry. You want me to go down?
I just want to make sure we were all looking at the same stuff.
Which which page you want me to on that?
So rural character.
Page sixty-six.
Was on page.
Page twenty-four or sixty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the one that starts with principle two, preserve rural character on the top. And the goals two, A, B, and on. Is that the section you were thinking of?
Are you on the the graph?
No, we're.
Are you taking it on page sixty-three, Denise, where it says one-third, one-third, one-third?
I want to know where you guys are. That's.
Well, I'm on the packet page thirty-nine, but it was eighty-one in the seven one twenty-four draft. It looks like.
Eighty-one, okay.
Which page did you say?
Thirty-nine in the packet. I know, I'm sorry. These have double page.
My question was on sixty-three was the definition of the graph that you could start your homework on the short-term level because the percentages.
We're we're talking about her item right now.
Okay. I was still waiting for her to find it.
Yeah, I I I'm going to withdraw my comment right now.
I I'd like to back up to page twenty-eight of the packet.
Okay. Just a second. Got it. Master plan workshop.
Under general feedback, the last sentence in that comment needs to be reworded to reflect the statements on page thirty-three, because here, this last sentence is, as with the survey data, opinions are divided on short-term rentals in terms of allowing them regu- regulating them and prohibiting them. And then later on thirty-three, you point out that two-thirds of the people are for them. It's just that it's divided whether it's with regulations or without regulations. And it seems like both of those statements should like work together. This one seems to to work against the. This one seems to work against our other statement.
Yeah. When you're referring to pages in the packet, it doesn't really help because everybody's screen might be different. But the page of the document is page seventy-four you're looking at?
Yeah, third page, it'd be seventy-five.
Second page, seventy-five, okay.
Denise, honey, rural character, it's on sixty-seven.
Yeah, we're on this topic now.
Yep.
So, um, so is the issue here that it says, uh, opinions are divided on short-term rentals in terms of allowing them, regulating them? Maybe, is it more clear if it says or prohibiting them?
Well.
So there were three choices given on the survey, these are the three choices. And then the summarization here says, looking for where that says that again.
They're both pointing to the bottom.
There it is, thanks.
Develop greater consensus on the level of regulation needed for short-term rentals. In White Water Township, about two-thirds of residents agree to allow short-term rentals with or without regulations. So they, they agree to allow them, but they can't agree on how to allow them. And it seems like this statement should reflect that because to me, uh, it seems like we're saying two different things in two different places in the master plan. And maybe it's just how I read it, but I just wanted to point that out.
What other page are you referring to there?
Page seventy in the pack, in, in the book, it's page twenty-eight of our packet.
Yeah, in the book, it's page seventy and then seventy-five.
Okay.
And on seventy-five, it's the third from the bottom bullet. And, and the first notation is under that general feedback.
And, and maybe I'm taking out a context because here we're trying to reflect something a little different. But as I read this, I read one thing here and then a few pages later, I read something different and I'm like, wait a minute. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like we're working together.
Well, that one seems to be on page seventy or thirty-three or seventy-five, that one seems to be a goal. And I'm wondering if on page twenty-eight, if that doesn't just, you know, just lay out the problem as we've seen it on the survey data. And then on thirty-three or seventy-five, does that just lay out the goal then, or am I looking at that wrong?
Planning principle, encourage economic opportunity. I guess that there's two different headings, general feedback, but it says, see on page seventy, it says, as with the survey, as with the survey data, opinions are divided on short-term rentals. Well, the overall opinion isn't that divided. Two-thirds is a landslide in any vote or red.
Yes, it is.
I mean, that's a landslide if you were gonna vote on something. Okay, so, uh, yes, there were different opinions. You're gonna get different opinions about every single topic we talk about, okay? But the township is really not that divided. If you're gonna talk about, if you're only gonna talk about the sixty or eighty people that showed up at our events, okay?
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, that's about, but that's how we seem to be basing almost everything we're doing here.
Yeah, that, that was the point I was going to.
We have to, we have, that's our data.
Well, I don't think so, I think we have more data than that and I'll bring that up later in some of the talk I want to talk about later. But, uh, uh, if we're basing it on that sixty or eighty people that showed up at our event, which seems to be how this is playing out, uh, uh, we are not divided, we are not that divided. Two-thirds is a huge majority.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a landslide if you were voting. If it was a, if it was a vote on to change the age of drinking, it'd be a landslide on anything, it'd be like two-thirds is a landslide.
Just a clarification though, that's not sixty to eighty, we're at the workshops, but we also had the survey data, which is where the two-thirds.
I was gonna say, this two-thirds stuff came.
From the survey.
Survey data, which wasn't at about six hundred respondents in that? It was pretty decent.
But.
It was decent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot better than sixty to eighty.
Well, you got a good point.
Yeah, it is, it is significant.
But to, to add on to his comments, nearly eighty percent were full-time residents and most were from east of Elk Lake Road and north of seventy-two. So that limits all of this discussion in terms of the data from the survey. East of Elk Lake Road and north of seventy-two, that group of residents, but the twenty percent was the other three-quarters. So.
Wow.
That's a, that's a, wow. So it, I think it skews the, the data a little bit and that's why I did more. I think you had mentioned ROS, uh, resident outreach subcommittees are necessary to talk about short-term rentals and make sure you have people from each quadrant, not just, you know.
And somebody from each district.
We've got to remember, if we had six, let's say if we had six hundred respondents back to it, I mean, that's a pretty good, that's a good sample size for no bigger than we are.
Yeah, and maybe most of the short-term rentals are in that quadrant, around the lake and on Elk Lake Road. But there are some south of seventy-two, I've seen that, but primarily the equestrian center is the northern portion of seventy-two, not the southern portion. So I, I just think for this topic that each quadrant should have a couple of people that, um, in my personal opinion, people who have a short-term rental and people who do not have a short-term rental but live next to one maybe, and how it affects them. And then have them have a discussion about it. I didn't go to the one last night, Monday night, Monday night for the short-term, it's their discussion. I would have loved to have been if I, I don't know if anybody did.
So, so let's just kind of be back to, so, um, Randy, you captured this concern about writing, uh, this description. Were you gonna take a look at that a little bit or? I mean, I want to make sure we kind of close up your discussion and capture everything that you were concerned about. So you're concerned that these give a different feel, these two.
Right, these two statements seem to have a different feel to them and that's one kind of point out. So I'm just one person in this group.
Let me try to clarify though, because what we had here was reporting what happened at the events. We reported the survey information, we reported the open house information, we reported the workshop information. There were three different steps along the way here. This general feedback is the statements that came out of that first open house, I think it was, or where we had, yeah. Yeah, so, so that's the feedback we gathered from that. Admittedly, you know, what do we have, fifty of the people there, seventy-five? I don't remember exactly, but there were not, not as many as the survey, but it was a slice of people willing to come out to a meeting at night to talk about this stuff and that's the results we got. So then you move on from that and you move on to the, the workshop results. And that's where you have the, the different things, uh, the different four things. And then prior to that, you had the survey, so we, it, it's sequential. We had, so three different efforts, three different outreach efforts. And as I said early in the process, all the citizen engagement techniques that you use, they all have benefits and limitations. The survey is great because you reach everybody, right? You send them all something and, and they respond or they don't, but at least you reached out to them. The, the workshops and the open houses are great because you get people coming to a meeting, talking, learning from each other, recording their comments and leaving and leaving you with results. But not everyone comes to that, you, it's not, you're not gonna get a thousand people coming to something like this unless you're a really big city. So, so that's why you do several different processes to reach out to people. And the general feedback that one paragraph is from a relatively small number of people, but they came out to a meeting and they expressed their thoughts and we recorded it.
And I think earlier in the master plan, we actually put the survey statistics, the actual numbers, right? I didn't put the whole thing in this.
We did, that's on page sixty-three with regard to.
That's where I quoted the eighty percent from the, or these quadrant.
So maybe does that need to be clearer in this document that those are?
I mean, it's almost exactly one-third, one-third, one-third.
So what we're saying is in all three of these surveys, different number of people, the results were essentially the same, one-third, one-third, one-third.
Well, we didn't quite ask the question in the same way, they, they were different. The survey question was a survey, how do you think, what do you feel about short-term rentals? Are you favorable them without regulation, with regulation, do you, whatever? I mean, where was choices?
They said it came out one-third for each position. But in the, uh, open houses and at, uh, what was also a much smaller number of people, did the, uh, did it turn out to be essentially the same, uh, results, one-third of them were for and others with regulation and others not one at all.
I mean, I agree with what Denise, who's been deep into this, um, since she was on the ROS, was just that there, this wording on page seventy-five, I think is, to me, it makes a lot of sense where it says, one of the, the things that'll have to be worked on is developing greater consensus on the level of regulation needed for short-term rentals in White Water Township. Recognizing that two-thirds of residents agree to allow some sort of short-term rentals. Right, like, like again, the majority of the people want to allow a certain amount of it with certain restrictions, possibly some rules, but I think people will have to really dig into, you know, some people are vehemently opposed and I think most of us know that's probably because of nuisance complaints, right? It's, you know, the one bad apple. And, and trying to figure out what's, what's really the right thing, you know? And I, I, I know for sure there's a few extreme examples that make it into the packets. And I'm sure there's lots that are operating without a problem. I, I'm sure it's a mixed bag. So the question is, is, is the wording fairly portraying the feedback that was gathered? So I think.
That's the question I'm posing you guys. This was, this is how I see it. So.
Yeah.
If, if you, uh, like I keep saying, I'm only one person in this group. So if I, it's just me, this is this way, then that's just my opinion and we're all entitled to our opinion. But it's a general consensus, you know, we have to go. So that, when I, as I was reading this, every time I, like I'm trying to read the new, uh, one you just handed us. And every time I read it, I catch something I didn't catch before, I see something that strikes me a little bit different than I read it the first time. And that's just my nature, okay? I caught other things the first time and now they're out of my mind and now I see something different. So this is, this is something that stuck out to me. And if it's not an issue with the whole group, then I brought it up, I mentioned it, we can be done with it. But I, I felt it was worth mentioning, that's why I brought it up.
I, I understand your point and I, yeah, yeah, two-thirds of the people want, as of now, if you're reading what's been going on throughout this area, it's, it's it's a real difficult situation, I, they, it's a trade, and, you know, I think, yeah, I understand it, I, it's one-third, one-third, one-third and two-thirds of the people will agree to some sort, one-third are opposed. Okay, I, I just, it is what it is, I didn't, you know, I understand that, you know, eventually from what you're seeing in the state and other communities, we're gonna have some sort of short-term rental, uh, we have to have regulations, no question about it, but, but the question is what kind of, nobody's gonna be happy, no matter what we come up with, uh, but the state's involved in it, uh, there's big businesses involved in it. Uh, you have to really be careful of what you ask for, you can absolutely destroy our community with too many short-term rentals. I mean, that's been given in other parts of the country, so, but you can't say no at all, right?
Yeah, it's something we're gonna have to deal with. It is, you know, what I, what I seen on there, Mike, it looked to me like, like this one was about the specific in-house workshop and this one was about the entirety of the survey, is that right, Randy? They're, they're the same thing, but two different sources?
Again, there's, there's three sources of information, the survey, the open house and the workshop. All three different kind of settings, organization for how we got input. In my mind, the survey information is probably the most significant because it reached more people. And it, it raises some questions that says that our policy as a township is out of sync with what people want. You know, we prohibit them now, uh, but residents clearly don't favor that, one-third do, but two-thirds don't. So we have work to do and that's my takeaway.
Yeah.
My takeaway is it looks like a directive, here's your main objective and when you get to page seventy, it's the goal. But maybe I'm on.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Can I say it to the ballot, we can make it, put it on the ballot too?
If it doesn't sound, if it doesn't sound contradictory to you guys, then it's just me.
Yeah, I agree with you from the standpoint, but I don't, I, I think this says the same thing. So I don't have a problem with the language, I totally agree with you with what it said. I might wanna, well, I can't, yeah. I don't like the idea of saying two-thirds are for it, but that's what it is. But I, I just don't wanna, I don't want to emphasize that.
Well, it's an open question. Okay, so then that poses the question, are we gonna, are we gonna emphasize the things that we feel we should emphasize and neglect the rest? Or are we gonna work for the community?
We work for the greater good.
For the community.
We gotta work for the community.
My opinion, my, what I want for this community means nothing.
Exactly.
What the community is asking of us and, and what we give the community is what we're supposed to be.
Right.
A dwelling on. And to me, uh, I think maybe it's because it was, you know, just a few pages later. This read one way and then I get a few pages later and it, it read different. I'm like, wait a minute, that seems contradictory to me. That's all I'm trying to point out. And you, you make, you make a pretty good point, general feedback, the heading, general feedback is different than, uh,
The survey, yeah.
Than the survey results, okay? So that, that does make sense. But when, when I, as I was reading through the packet and as I read this, I mean, just like, wow, just a few pages later, you seem to be contradicting yourself. That, that's how it struck.
I think part of it is because, and I can see why it would be confusing to you, but I think part of it is, is because it is a mixed bag of feedback depending on who's in the room. And definitely those workshops were, they were workshops, but then, like that first one, people were allowed to go around and make comments on all the boards, right? So you could potentially get feedback from like fifty or fifty people, sixty people. But that second one was their groups, so it was smaller groups of twelve or fifteen people at a table that, that looked at an issue. And so I think when you get these fifteen people together, you might get a different sense of the community than when those fifty people just independently. that that looked at an issue. And so I think when you get these fifteen people together, you might get a different sense of the community than when those fifty people just independently went around and didn't talk to each other, but put stickers on a board versus when they sit at their kitchen table and fill out something. I I do think it it is, you know, we would all wish that our community would come out like, to me, I would love it to be like eighty percent say they want something like that. But it is really a mixed bag, depending on what people are experiencing in their neighborhood or what they're hearing. I think I think it can vary wildly.
And I think that survey, where was like, was there six hundred? Is that right, Randy? Respondents? I think that is, that is a, that's a lot of input on what they want us to do. In my opinion, I mean, that's a pretty good-sized group that says this is what we'd like to do. And I think that's what we need to follow.
Yeah, but I think that's a long ways from actually, you then you have to actually divide. Divide and, that's right, yeah. The whole other. You know, which can help refine that, right? To try and make it, to try and protect the people that are experiencing pain because of it, and to try and also, you know, be reasonable about what rules people have to follow, right?
And I'm just going to add the additional thought is the principal residence exemption is based upon you you can rent out a certain percentage of your house before you have to give that up. It can't, it can't be, you have to have at least seventy-nine percent of your house for your your living space. And if you have, you know, a short-term rental on more than that, I'd like, well, so that would be twenty-two percent, if you had twenty-two percent. Then you lose your principal residence exemption. I don't think a lot of people know that. And I don't know if the assessor knows that, but that, you look at this, the principal resident, P R E, it's called the principal resident exemption. If you, it's a document about fifty, sixty pages. You read that, and it changes how you look at everything, your own house, any building you have on your property. It's kind of like, oh, my, you know, like, I can, you know. It changes. There's more rules than what we are aware of, so.
You're talking about home study, right, Denise?
P R E, principal residence exemption. It's a, it's on the state website.
Okay, so I have one last comment. If you guys advance to page eighty, now that you've been through sixty-three, seventy, and seventy-five, page eighty has a goal one F, which is where it gets wrapped up into what should the master plan goal be? And this was one that says address short-term rentals in a way that's consistent with public opinion. So the specific goal would be, Whitewater Township does not allow short-term rentals, but about two-thirds of the residents think they should be allowed with or without some type of regulation. So that's really, that's the final summary right here. Local policy should be updated. This goal is met by an amendment to the zoning ordinance and our development of another type of regulatory mechanism. And that this was labeled one to two years. That was a shorter time horizon. Does that help? Kind of, I agree with you, sometimes getting your brain to pull from page sixty-three to page eighty. It's a, it's a successive steps, this information, this information.
No, I'm I'm fine. I just want, I just wanted to bring it up.
No, I think it was a good discussion. Same, if I have anything else to add to short-term rental before we wrap that one up. Okay, what do you guys want to tackle next? Do you have a general one, or do you wanna talk? We started off, Denise, you wanted to do rural character, I think. Heidi said it was on like sixty-five.
Oh, I I was just population that responded on the survey, eighty percent being from the northeast quadrant. That isn't really ag to me. I, there is some ag in east of Elk Lake Road, of course, because that's where I am, but it's.
According to that, there's a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of egg.
Maybe the west. But west of Elk Lake Road, there's a lot of egg.
Denise, all the way to egg.
Yeah, I understand.
I think I think of egg as, well, a larger, I'm sorry.
So do you want to, maybe to shorten this conversation? Do you want to cut to the chase of, so in this, in this thing we got here, we got the the summary of the goals is on this one page. I gotta just find it. At the beginning or the end, there's the summarization. It's on page eighty-eight in the book, which is forty-six in the packet. It looks like this. I really like this sheet because it's on one piece of paper. Okay, so this is the one that, so you can see there's broken into groups. So the short-term rental was one F. You know, highlight, this is good information. So that that's under respect the rights of property owners, because, you know, being able to rent your property, that's property right. Right? So then the next big, huge section is preserve Whitewater Township's rural character. So so those are in section two. So there's a private road ordinance. I don't think, that's not what I'm focused in on right this minute. Firm land preservation, we had a presentation about that. If a property owner wants to elect that, they can. Natural beauty roads. Adhere to generalized future land use plan illustrating agricultural areas. Where rural qualities of landscape are preserved. And then the other one to, A, have regulatory tools in place to preserve and maintain rural character.
So where are you at? Just give me, give me one page number, not two.
Yeah, in the.
In your packet.
Yeah.
Forty-six.
Or way back.
It's like at the very end of the master plan section. So those are all the principles, too.
It's page eighty-eight.
Page eighty-eight?
Yes.
In the book.
In the book.
Yeah.
In the package, forty-six.
Yeah, but we, he's just, we're using a laptop, so we have the, we have to go by the actual.
You don't have that.
Yeah, we have that. We have eighty-eight. We don't see.
You don't see the forty, so.
You don't see that.
Oh, oh.
It's difficult for somebody, we're using our laptops, and you guys are doing hard copies and we're.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah.
Carl, if you find eighty-eight on the bottom of those pages.
Yeah. That was, yeah, gotta go back down to that. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because we got two pages on.
So they could almost do a similar thing to what we just did on short-term rentals and then walk through, what did the survey say? What did the first workshop say? What did the second workshop say? What did these, you know, this is like the summary sheet, but the nuts and bolts are in, it's like they're in two-way. Where it talks about determining appropriate minimum lot size. Everybody seems real focused on that.
I was trying to go down.
Data says, again, the majority of the people thought that the one acre was adequate.
And I think that's, that's under the six hundred.
And see where you are.
People that I am. Well, that's one. Almost right in line with what sixty was, too. They're, they're running the same, aren't they? Like when you say the two-thirds in the workshops was two-thirds one, you get the same two-thirds, six hundred. They're, they're, they're very similar. The, they're very similar throughout. Yeah, yeah, that the ones that that came, the sixty that came. Same period, six hundred, four, versus sixty, who probably filled out the online survey as well.
Yeah.
But it's just like, it's just like they're almost parallel.
Yeah.
You know?
You're on thirty-three.
Well, I also think the more passionate people, whether they're really pro or really against, tend to show up to these open houses.
Yeah, I don't think you see a big difference. Somebody that's at the open house had views much different than what the survey took. I think, I think they're almost like that, aren't they?
They're similar.
Right, yeah, very similar.
Percentage twice.
Yes, yes, percentage twice, yeah.
Yeah.
The survey was easy enough to fill out.
Yes.
All right, I want to do a time check here. It's nine forty. We have some simple business to take care of at the end of the meeting, some quick stuff. But I I know that we're gonna, getting on in time, so I'm not sure if people want to review this rural character. If we want to pick that up next time, or if you want to plow through that right now, or, Mike, I think you had some other items that you wanted to talk about.
Whatever the last meeting.
Whatever the group wants to do. Why don't you go ahead, Mike, that?
Right? As far as this Kim's comments and the kind of rebuttal sheet that was in our packet in that meeting, it put me to thinking quite a bit. And and I kind of made, I I kind of already made the comment. There's, there's moments when it seems like we're willing to take some of the data and and use it, other parts of the data we'd like to ignore. In, I'm sixty-three in the book, this whole it was a review of the twenty-fifteen master plan.
Yeah, show them that page, just the one with the colors.
Three in the master plan.
Yeah, and this is the three nineteen copy. I use this copy because this is the copy Kim was referencing to.
I don't have that.
Show the page numbers.
For what section?
Is it twenty-four? Page twenty-four?
Chapter, yeah, chapter five, and it happens to be page sixty-three in this book. But I I made this comment myself, but I think Kim's words were a little better. And the point of the whole thing is, like, but the heading is respect the rights of township residents and property owners. But the question or the or the statement under that talks about what what that means. And that this is a guarantee by the state of Michigan and the United States. It says, respect the private property rights as guaranteed by the state of Michigan and United States Constitution. And that is the largest number on this whole sheet. Thirty-five people agreed with that. Not one single person was wishy-washy about it, and not one single person disagreed with it. And and that, like, gets washed out in this thing. We hardly mention it in the new master plan. I I personally think, and Kim's statement speaks to it as well, that that's important to people. That's clearly important to people. And not only do people not only do I see it here, but I had many people say it directly to me. Okay, so I I think that that's important, that that is, is given some more weight in our documents. So, you know, there's times when it just feels like issues, some issues don't seem to be as important to the group as other issues are. To me, I I've already said this, it's the whole community. We're working for the whole community. We're not working for the lakefront people. We're not working for the farmers, not working for the business people, we're not working for the industrial district. We're working for all the residents and the whole community. And I, I extremely believe that. That's how I try to conduct myself. Another thing that I think that we are completely overlooking, I don't think we've touched on it at all. I think Deb is a huge amount of input. And it's not just Deb, it's, it was Bob before her. We hear from the zoning administrator time and time and time and time again about how many people come in looking for this, or how many people come in looking for that, or how many people come in looking for something different. This is input. This is the community coming to this building with questions, desires, thoughts, dreams. That's input, and we haven't touched on a drop of it. I think it's something that's being overlooked completely.
And how are you gonna get that input, Michael? You gonna take it off your zoning report? Well, I get, I understand that, but do you want us to start looking at our zoning reports and statistically?
I don't think we have to. We've sat through all these meetings, and we we can, we know what what they've been telling us. People are asking about short-term rentals. People are asking about the mother-in-law apartment above their garage. People are asking, I mean, you go down the list. Maybe we have to have her refresh our memory, but some of these things are asked about very regularly. That is our community coming to us with input. We, for some reason, don't seem to want to incorporate it into this, and I didn't even think about it myself until reading Jim's paperwork. And and another thing I want to say about Kim's thing, her whole thing here, I don't agree with everything she said. I don't think everybody in this room agrees with everything she said. But she, this is an individual from the community who's coming to us with their thoughts on what we put together. And no two people look at anything the same. If she's, if she's said something here, and we're like, well, anyway, what we meant, then we need to be thinking, well, how many other people read it and think something that we didn't read? So maybe our wording or our
Verbiage.
Yeah, is, needs tweaking a little bit. So I I think this rebuttal page did a pretty good job on most of the things, but I, but I disagree with some of those things, too. I, I think there's some there's some ground in between what Kim's opinion was and what our rebuttal was, or the rebuttal. So it's, it's important. I mean, this is, this is input. Again, it's input, and you all know, there's not, there's no two people that see the same thing at the same. You could, we could be standing side by side watching a event, and when I tell the story of how, what happened at that event, it's different than when you remember. It's just how it is. And when people read stuff, it's the same way. So giving her, her her comments once over and letting the whole group put their input on it, I I think it's pretty important. I've got notes in all over the place here, so we just gonna have to bear this.
So let me ask you, where do we want to go from here on this? I I know that a lot of this information was in the packet last month, and we wanted to make sure we took some time to talk about it this month. But it it becomes difficult as far as a big bowl of mashed potatoes to weed your way through. So.
I I think if we have, I think if we, we can't come to a decision, and we're not sure, I think our doors should go back to that six hundred survey and look at that and say, okay, what did the, what did our six hundred residents, what was their opinions on this? That's proof. That's their opinion, whether we like it or not, which, which, like Mike said, doesn't matter. But if we, if we get stuck on an issue that we just can't come to agreement on, I think we've got, we've got our our six hundred person, our sixty, our workshops, and Deb. Just look to those. If we can't find an answer, ask Deb, and we got our answers. Everything I think we need comes out of those surveys. I think if we get, if we have any doubts of what the township wants us to do, I think we just look back at our master plan, which came was built on those and go back to that.
We narrowly described in personal property rights and chapter six with four entities.
So, Mike, would you, would that be true or not?
Well, yeah, I think all, all the data needs to be looked at, and I think it's interesting that we know where some of the data came from, what quadrant it came from, but we don't know where all of it came from. I think that's somewhere in the footnote in the back of this. It's another something I think should be added. I think the next time they do this, some of that information should be captured. Who is giving input and what part of the community are they? Because there are certain parts of the community that are driving certain parts of this, in my opinion. The whole, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole, I mean, there's a great consensus to save rural character of whitewater township, and the farmland is a huge part of that. But we don't seem to give the farmers much weight in that discussion. The people who, the people who want to have bigger lot sizes seem to hold more weight in what we've got down here. And if you don't help the farmers in some way or work with them or give them some tools to work with, you're going to lose it all. They're up against it already. They got the government paying them to dump their cherries on the ground while the government's letting other countries ship cherries into America. I mean, every person in this room should have sent a letter to their congressperson and saying that's wrong. That's how you help the farmers. And then you, you don't, you don't tell them how they can sell their land. That's up to them. They paid the taxes and the dues all these years. That's personal property rights, individual property rights.
And that would take a zoning change, a zoning ordinance change, and that, and I know what you're saying. I think, I think this, I think we've been very supportive of other farmers when they've come in for needing some things like, you know, other things. I think, because I don't think we've turned anybody down. I think we've been in full support. So I think we're in support. I think what Mike is saying is an ordinance change that needs to be changed because we
Well, I don't think we need to change it. I think we need to live alone because that one acre makes them, they can sell off a corner lot or a square lot or a piece of property that's not producing or produces well, when they need some extra cash to make ends meet. And they know what part, you know, they know how to make their operation work so that they can keep it. I don't. You don't. The people who live on the lake don't. The people who live out in the woods don't. Only the farmer knows how to make that work, not us. So in our, in our book, somewhere it says that we point out, and I know it's in the, in the survey and all the community said that, it's a small, it's a small margin on the make the lots bigger. Okay? But those same people are saying they want to preserve the character of the area. And they, and they point to the farms as the things they want to say. Well, if they don't understand how to help the farmer to be able to say that, then maybe part of our job is to help educate them or to help open their eyes a little bit. Because making them have to sell a five-acre chunk at a time isn't, isn't help. And there were farmers in some of these, our open houses, saying exactly that. On the other hand, you can sell it off one acre at a time, and that destroys the farm community one acre apart. Somewhere in there is a way to come up with something that, yeah. Yeah, I talked to the supervisor in Acme Township, and, you know, they have five acres, and then they have buying the development rights. Maybe there's a subcommittee that goes around and all kinds of communities finding out what the hell will work. I don't, you know, I understand both sides, but when a guy can take and sell forty acres off to a builder and he comes in and puts in a whole bunch of stuff, it's the same thing. You're destroying it one acre at a time. You're destroying it five acres at a time. What's, what's the plan? What, what can we?
I guess my point, my question at this point, at this point, have we hindered anybody from doing what they want to do with their farmland?
Oh, no.
No, yeah, no, we haven't.
I think the concern that I'm hearing people say is, again, you have three data sets. You have survey, open house, workshop. And then with all of this, this is a ton of information collected over time, lots of people listening, and then it came down to these, these goals. So at the end of the day, it comes down to these goals, divided into these four planning principles. And I think there's one of these, help me out, Randy.
One of them says, respect.
Use the number on it, if you can, please, so we can find it in our book. So there's one of these that talks about, talks about the egg. It actually talks about the actual size of the lot in a
You're looking, what are you looking for, the survey question?
It all, no, it all boils down to you have the survey question, then you have the open house, then you had the plan.
So that's on page seventy-three.
Thank you. So seventy-three, so seventy-three was the workshop, right? But then, I got a yellow sticky on that. So preserve whitewatered rural character. So there was information that was this, this seventy-three was the output of that. But then, after all that, then it gets boiled down into master plan goals, which is, you got to go a few more pages. So it looks like eighty-one. Thank you, Lois. Oh, look, I put a red star next to this a couple of months ago in July. So number two A, need regulatory updates, which is zoning, to address the polling issues. And are described more fully in the following chapter. Determine an appropriate minimum lot size in A1. It doesn't say what it should be. It just says, work on determining that. Define land divisions allowed, width to depth ratios. That's for Carl. Eliminate R1 zoning along creeks. Okay, so it, it goes on with a list of things, talks about PUDs, and then it says it's defined more on a following chapter. Is there more than that, Randy, or is that pretty much it? I think that's it, right?
I think that's it, but then if we go on to describe the strategy for that, and that's in the following chapter, which is chapter seven, page ninety.
So it doesn't say that we're increasing
No, it clearly does not, and I don't know where that came from. But, you know, there's also a description in here, an extensive amount of description, saying that residents want to preserve agricultural character described by, and they defined it, what that meant to them. Remember, we asked that question in the survey. What does agriculture, what does rural character mean to you? And then we go on to describe the fact that farming is an increasingly difficult endeavor from the standpoint of profitability, flexions in production costs, commodities. This can encourage farmers to sell off lands, home sites for income. Farmers may also explore other options for additional revenues. Fundamentally, farms, our businesses do not, do not exist solely to provide rural character to a community. So we're recognizing the fact that their businesses, they have to be profitable, and it's not a holding category waiting for something else to happen either. So our agricultural land is, is significant. There's nothing in here about ten to twenty acres, period. And I don't, and it's unfortunate that that got out there, and the conversations went sideways from that point on, because this plan doesn't say that. It recognizes that, that there was discussion about, about acreages, but there's no conclusion drawn in here. None, none, zero.
It does point out, I don't know what page it's on, but it does point out that there's a small margin. The margin is leaning towards larger
No, there was some survey results that came back. We asked residents, is one acre an appropriate size? And, and there were some, these are residents speaking. This isn't planning commission. This isn't, this isn't me. Okay, so there are residents that are saying that, and so it wasn't overwhelming. We point out that it's not overwhelming at this point. So it, it is what it is. The numbers are the numbers, what you do with it, you know, in terms of, there is no, but there's no specific recommendation here to change the lot size to anything.
No, you're right. There is no specific recommendation.
Okay.
But the, but the, but the, the verbiage, to me, is like leading people to think in that direction, that that will solve the problem, and that is not the solving.
What is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The solving of the
I don't, I agree with you.
Yeah, I've gone over on this, I've seen there's those five-acre lots over near the lake. It was a Wally Cox's own property. Yeah, that, that's not the answer, but putting up big subdivisions, I don't know what the answer is. That's why I say, maybe we need to find some communities that have found the answer. Maybe they have, I don't know. Now, you, you've changed my thinking on that quite a bit and talking with, I can't think of his name right now, the Acme supervisor, and what's going on there.
He's a farmer and just sold all his land to a developer.
And there's the, you know, the big horse show over there. People are buying up, you know, lots like mad, and just basically driving the farmers out. I don't know.
Not dragging them out. They're selling out.
You know, to try and bring this kind of together, you know, the, and we've talked about this a lot in the past, but the master plan survey is, it's online. I know I have a hard copy in my office at home. But I personally think that we should all give this some thought and come back ready to talk about it at the next meeting. And, but make sure you look, look at the chain of events through the master plan book. You can look at the survey to see the actual numbers, and then make sure that you check how it is stated in this book, and is it done correctly? I mean, I think that's really important, and I mean, I know this is a bit of a hornet's nest here today, but I mean, these are things that are on the minds of the people in this community, for sure.
And one thing I was thinking, Linda, when we, if, let's say we've come to a conclusion and we want to make a change, then, then have a public comment. Have them come in and say, this is what we think, and let them comment. Maybe we'll get full agreement. Maybe, maybe the community will hit it. We need to go back to work.
And that is the point of the review process, but I, I think we've got the information to make sure that, I think, responding to your concern, Mike, we have to make sure that we are absolutely as objective as we can possibly be. You know, I think Randy's trying to be that way, that this data
I just think that there's so, some, it just, there's another part, there's another thing that I forgot to say. Were any of you people at the, at the meeting at the school when Joe Anderson was running things and tried to turn this into a gated community?
Which gated where?
Yes.
They wanted to change the zoning, just regulate what kind of signing or roofing or landscaping you could do, even the whole community. And, and the community erupted. There was a, there was a
You don't hear this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And like, the community came unglued with the plan. And, and after, after reading Kim's thing, my wife has been reading a little bit of this master plan thing, too, and she helped, she kind of pointed that out to me. She's like, this sounds similar to that. Some of this sounds similar to what was going on then. And like, the outcry was so bad, Joe Walk didn't give his resignation just before the meeting, because he didn't want to face the people. That, that school was a hundred and seventy-five people at least, probably two hundred or more. And almost every single person was upset with what they were reading, and we are going to have a public hearing on this. Okay? And, and if, if we're not thinking about the whole community, then that's what we're going to have. We're going to have this room full, or we're going to have to schedule it up at the school, because people are going to come and tell you what they think. But to get them to come out, I know this is a hard deal to get people to come out and go to our open houses. It's hard to get people to even fill out the surveys. I mean, what do we send out? Fifteen-hour surveys? I mean, it's
That's not even half.
Yeah, it's horrible. I get it. It's hard to get public input, but oh, once you get their gander up, I guarantee you, they'll tell you what they think.
Okay, Randy, what's your comment?
I just want to contrast a couple of things. You know, the current draft of your master plan here has several chapters that describe our citizen engagement. We made a very important outreach effort to do that. There is virtually nothing in this document, in the fifteen plan, that talks about how the goals were established, how there's no strategies in this thing. We've gone as far as I think we can go, unless you want to add more to it. I mean, but I'm just saying that, that we have gone to great lengths to be transparent. To be clear, we even had Networks Northwest tabulate the survey results for us so that we didn't touch it. We, we had another company come in and help us conduct those workshops, so it wasn't guided in any way. We had them give us the conclusions from those workshops. So the, the, there's just night and day difference between, between where we've, where we've gone and what efforts we've made to truly, I don't have myself any preconceived ideas about what this master plan should say. I mean, my job, I believe, is to draw this out from the community and the planning commission, and, and you own this document.
Yeah, no, I think you've done a great job, and please don't misunderstand this to me, that I'm criticizing the work. I just, I think there's a huge amount of data that we probably don't even know how to capture, and that's the stuff that Deb hears every single day. That's the community coming to this building.
Well, that's why I asked you, do we start looking at what she's given permits for and everything else, or do we ever keep a little log?
I don't, I don't know.
This is what everybody talked about today.
I think Deb might have a comment. What do you?
I have a comment, yeah.
We want to go to bed. No, I'm
My dog's been home since three, and, yeah, anyway. You guys have gone above and beyond. I mean, the last master plan I worked on at Taurus Lake Township, we got a hundred and five people to respond, a hundred and five out of twelve hundred. So to get six hundred people
That's a lot.
to comment and give input, this is just a snapshot in time. And, and, you know, this isn't, oh, my God, I gotta, I gotta write this, and this is what we got to follow for the next twenty years. This is, this is summarizing where we are at this moment in time, because six months from now, we might get state regulations saying you're going to be required to have short-term rentals. Eight months from now, you may get another requirement. Ten months from now, you're going to get another requirement. You know, we don't know what's coming. This is just a summary of where we are today. Here's the information we pulled together. We got six hundred people in our community to get engaged and share this information. And I just don't want you to just beat, beat it, beat it, and beat it, because a year from now, you need to go back and take a look at it again, and maybe you want to tweak something in there. And five years from now, you're going to need to look at it again. And ten years from now, you're going to have to redo it all over again. So, but if you have a really good foundation, six hundred people giving input into this, you guys are way ahead of most communities. This is one of the best master plans I've ever read. I mean, I've seen them rubber stamped in manila, vanilla folders, but, you know, and they want to make every township look the same. But you guys have really good input. Just don't overthink it. This is just a point in time. This is, this is the community today, something you're not taking into consideration. What's the turnover? How many people are selling out? If you bring in short-term rentals, you're going to see a mass exodus out of this community.
You will.
Because people are fed up with what, you know, there's a thing called NIMBY, not in my backyard. And, oh, yeah, bring in short-term rentals until it's in your backyard, and everybody, you're, you just, your lovely beach is now, you know, you got Party Central. And so And so it's something to factor in, but to take it to a vote of the people, but you guys have options, but, you know, don't overthink it, just remember, this is a point in time, and I mean, the surveys were done, what, last winter? Last fall. Last fall, so it's almost a year old, so it's just where you are, where we were at the time. You know, something you might want to check with is the assessor, how many properties have sold? How many have turned over, how many new lots have been created? How many splits have we done, and how many new lots have been created? I mean, I know I've got a lot of farmers splitting off little two-acre parcels, building their retirement homes, but keeping farming going, so there's, there's a lot going on, but you guys, you guys have a really sound thing, just don't, just keep moving with it. You know, you're.
Michael, can I just ask one question? On page, chapter six, page seventy-seven, it states the four things that our planning principles are. So one of them says, respect the rights of the township residents and the property owners, and if you start reading, it goes into complete detail with a few things we have to maybe define or conquer. But would it make everybody feel better if the respect the rights of the township residents got somewhere on the first page?
I don't know.
I know that, but my question is, that, that's a general statement.
I know it's a general, every office is.
The rights that were given by the constitution are our own private property rights.
So you want, you want property, you want personal property rights defined better?
I, I wanted to, I, I think it's important that we mention that these rights are given to us by the constitution of our state and our federal government.
Which is a definition, right, that's a definition.
Okay, and, and so far, maybe I've missed it, maybe it's in here and I'm just missing it. If I'm missing it, please point it out to me, I'll shut my big fat mouth.
No, now I understand what you want.
The, uh, we are not pointing out, it's almost like we're trying to hide that.
Right, I, I under, I get it, so there, there needs to be more of a definition, I'll have to go back and look at the other master plan and see if it's defined somewhere in there, but I don't think.
You mean like a disclaimer?
No. What are private property rights, what are they? We, we are guaranteed.
Definition.
Look, could they just, you guys.
By the state and the federal government, we are guaranteed our private property rights. Why are we not mentioning, why isn't that somewhere in here?
Would it, just under principle number one on page seventy-eight, respect the rights of the township residents and property owners according to the federal, or the US Constitution and our state regulations.
A statement like that somewhere in this book is what I'm talking about.
Yes, so right at the very top of the blue box. It's, and according to our US Constitution.
I would also compare it to, I'm sure there's some verbiage in the prior master plan.
That's what I'm, that's what I wanted to go look at, so.
I mean, I think, I think for those that are passionate about certain things, I think you should come with a recommendation, I mean, we can't throw all of this on Randy.
The oath that we all took says.
Great, good.
Support the.
Support the constitution.
And we haven't mentioned that anywhere in here. And I.
Thank you for defining, that's what I wanted to know, because possibly, maybe we could just put it in the definition.
Okay.
I'll come back with something.
I would like to, at this point, you know, then, uh, please, uh, when I get, I may get a draft agenda earlier to make sure I caught all the items you guys want to talk about next month to just make sure that it represents all of you, just not my notes. So, um, planning, planning bylaws, okay, I know you've all been waiting for this. I finished this, I wanted to just make sure you look at this real quick and that I added the footnote as we discussed back in April. So if you look at the bylaws that are in here, it's on, it's on the page ten. I think I forgot to renumber the pages after I added this document, therefore it's not in there, so. Yeah, show them out in the paper, so here's the bylaws, I'll show it to you at the same time. The rule of necessity now has a, a number one next to it, and the, the, page ten, no, page ten of ten? Seven of ten, seven of ten. So this is.
Hold on, Kyle has a question first.
Does the township board have the rule of necessity in their bylaws?
I have no idea.
I don't either, and I don't have any idea of why we need that.
We've already voted on it, we've already approved it.
Let's back up, the rule of necessity was already in the bylaws from earlier this calendar year. All we're doing is adding a definition, and we voted and agreed to do this in April. This is just the paper. Okay, but the paper, that's okay, this was the majority, this is the paper that says, and this is exactly what else supplied to me. And there is a source of it at the end of it, it says it's from the American Bar Association Comment on Rule two point eleven, item three, I looked it up and made sure that was correct. So I'm just showing this to you, if you're all good with this, I'll get y'all happy and I'll figure out where I gotta file this because I don't know where I need to file it, but I'll figure that out.
I think you send it to the board and show them the changes again, and they'll give me some crap about that.
So my question is, does anybody have, I think, I think we all did what we said we were gonna do? Is that right? Are there any concerns at all? Okay, it's just adding a definition so you don't have to look it up, all right, I will finalize that and figure out where to store it. Okay. Move on here, I gotta make note of that. And I will send you guys electronic copies, you guys can let me know who wants paper, Mike, who wants paper, right? All right, that's all right, okay, moving on, quick items here at the end. Um, new business, Michigan Association of Planning Group membership, Randy, put this in your packet, so there's a brochure as to what this is, we put money in the budget this past year for this. So this, Randy, do you want to give us the high level?
Sure, this is the organization that basically supports planning commissions, planners, and planning commission members across the whole state of Michigan, they're a very large organization with a lot of resources, they do not only an annual conference, which is coming up in Grand Rapids, which has a track for professionals as well as planning commission members. They also have a whole lot of other educational things, there's a newsletter, not newsletter, magazine that comes out. Basically, this is the organization supporting planning and planners and planning commission members in Michigan. And we, we talked about this when the budget was being prepared, but we didn't, uh, take the step forward to go ahead and join.
So I think the deal is, if you see on the front sheet, it says a group of twelve for seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that was in the budget, I verified that online. So I think the, the question that's really in front of all you is, is do we want to proceed to join this, so I think with a group of twelve, everybody would get a magazine, right?
Yeah.
You would get monthly publications and have access to, I assume, like a discount on classes and things like that.
Yeah, there's also a whole lot of resources that they have, just like MTA does, and, um.
Does that mean you can like get an online ID?
Yes, discounted. They have material on zoning updates and master plans and capital improvements plans, all kinds of material.
Okay, so.
Is, well, is there a, a greater benefit as a group over individual at sixty-five?
They offer that for planning commission members specifically.
So this group membership would be for the whole commission of seven, and seven times sixty-five is four hundred and fifty-five dollars. So I was wondering why we would want to do.
Oh, I didn't see that part.
Well, if, if I'm reading it right, I'm just saying that the pricing.
I know, Deb, are you a member of this?
Individual, it said, okay, individual membership is sixty-five dollars, and a group is seven hundred and twenty-five. So we only have seven, so that's seven times sixty-five is four hundred and fifty-five dollars, unless we want, does the ZBA have their own budget, we could include the ZBA in the twelve, and then we would have.
All right, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so do we have a volunteer that could maybe make a phone call to them and to just clarify that, because I think it's a good point, Denise, do the math. Um, we also.
Could add the board members too, if you want.
We also have some people with expiring terms coming up, and so I do think that needs to be, um, thought about. Like, it, it may not be, my, my question would be, for people that fully intend to fulfill their term, it may be prudent for them to sign up for individual memberships, and, um, and maybe some people need to, to hold off, you know, depending on, you know, their personal decision on where they think they're at. Does that kind of make sense? I mean, I, I think it is important to consider that, now obviously, we got Deb here, you know, and.
Do we look at it at budget time?
Well, and the other thing is, is, again, you know, people get reappointed at, you know, at the beginning of the year, and so.
Is, is this annual?
I haven't looked at the chart. You know, I think Denise took just a small partial term, and she'll, she'll be walking out of here, and so, I mean, I think we have to be a little bit um, responsible about that, that you're like three quarters of the way through, so, um.
I don't think that the group of twelve, unless, you know, if they would add, we could add, uh.
Board members?
Not board members, but new PC members that come in and, and to fulfill the, at the partial term of someone else, we could add them, but still, it, this is seven twenty-five a year versus sixty-five a year per person, and you could have a rotation of about another, what, four people?
Why don't we go with the individuals, because if somebody doesn't want to go, then it's a waste, just individually, if you want to sign up for it, then they'll take it, and if you don't, why?
The other thing I'm seeing is, I just did a little bit of hand math here really quick, this, this seven hundred and twenty-five dollars really only saves you fifty-five bucks, it's like nothing, it's less than one membership, so why would you sign up for twelve if you don't need twelve?
Yeah, that's.
You're not really saving much money.
Yeah.
Thanks for pointing that out, Denise.
I'm a coupon flipper, I'm sorry.
You got the coupon lady for the day, all right, so kind of think about that, maybe we can maybe briefly talk about that next time again.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments on that? All right, so I think on that, we'll just kind of agree to, uh, decide that individually.
Too, we let Deb go home, let the dog out.
Yeah, go get your dog out there, go, go.
I know if that was Daisy, I'd say, sorry folks, I gotta go.
So, uh, seriously, he's pretty good about that. All right, so, um, I want to get Mr. Sherman's request, um, I glanced at the, um, paperwork here. Um, I, I really don't think it's, I don't think it's prudent for more than two people from the PC to meet with him because I think you're getting to the edge of ex parte communication, and it's, that's bad. I, my input on this would be that I would like to see people that, um, you know, are not only available, but are going to be on this PC for a period of time. You know, because you're gonna gain a lot of extra knowledge to share, and so, um, I, I think I want people, I would like people to consider volunteering that are going to be here.
Well, one thing too, why don't we just ask him to bring us a presentation, we'll look at it, I mean, we're not.
I think. So.
I can.
Deb, why don't you talk about the, the.
Unique situation here is his home sits on residential property. He has one parcel number, but he has a PUD overlay on the north side of the pond, on the same parcel number. So I have multiple districts in one parcel number, and I just want to make sure it's a village effort, and basically, what these couple of people are gonna help me do is I need people that are real familiar with our ordinances so that we can go through the ordinances and make sure that we cover all the components within the ordinance that he is gonna need to present, so when I go, I, when we get done with him, we say, you're gonna need to fill out a site plan review. You're gonna need, you may be required to fill out a special use, you know? Is he gonna need to get a waiver of some sort because he's gonna have a barn of animals near within a hundred feet of neighboring properties, or is he grandfathered in? These are the types of things, little things we need to work through, and then figure out what components does he need to complete to make this whole picture pretty, so that when I do my little zoning report and I say, oh, he's doing this, and he's doing that, and he's applying this and this, and this, and this order, da, 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 that you have everything you need to be able to make a decision. So what a couple of people from this group will help me do is make sure I don't miss any components. I mean, I'm gonna kind of direct this, but I need a couple of people that are real familiar with the ordinances. And just, this is all preliminary, this isn't, we're making decisions, no, this is based on what his team of people, I mean, he's got attorneys involved, he's got designers involved, he's got Doug Mansfield engineer involved, who just got involved, and I don't know how long it'll take him to get up to speed on everything. Um, I haven't dealt with Doug Mansfield yet, so, except for the Bags Road thing, and that was, and he didn't even know how to spell Van Salkema, so I figured, well, this will be interesting, but, um, but that's what I need to do, it's just, it's all gonna be preliminarily, what does he need to provide to me, and then I'll wrap it all up and present it. But I want to make sure we don't miss any components of what he's wanting to do and how, and what in our ordinance needs to be applied to it.
And I would just ask, my only input on this is that he provide, between you and him, before you guys sit down, he provide good quality drawings that show his property lines and key features, so that there is not confusion about what you're looking at.
He's already got that, correct?
Seen a lot of that in some meetings about confusion about where, where things are, so I know, so I gave my input, we need two people to do that, I am not volunteering to do that because I will not be in this position long term.
Okay.
And, and that's a situation with several of us.
I'd like to volunteer because I've never gotten a chance to do it, and that was one of the reasons why I couldn't sit here.
That you are rotating off of this.
And I could.
I, but that's not what I, Linda, that's not what I decided.
You won't be here to follow it through, did, did I misunderstand you?
Preliminary, okay, this review, and what she's gonna do is probably gonna take a month, maybe, less than a month, three days?
I don't, I don't know.
In your opinion, what does it normally take?
It, this is, this one's gonna be unique, and I'm hoping Randy's gonna be available for at least some of this, because of the multiple overlays that we're gonna be, um, utilizing. I mean, I've kind of seen his big, grandiose plan, but there's a lot of parts to this.
So just so you know, you're dealing with a pretty sophisticated developer here, with this gentleman, he's done some pretty good sized projects in Traverse City. He's got a team of people, not only himself as an architect, he's got engineers, and he's had a historic person as well, so this is really above and beyond what you would normally see, this is not your Dollar General.
So is there something we should be concerned about?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, doing this, having this meeting, being cautious, walking through them, step by step.
The whole reason I want a village of people, and, and I have.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm gathering.
He spent three years, he, he evaluated all of his options before he bought this property, and so he was told a lot of things verbally in the past, not by me. All I've done is gone out and walked the property with him.
Does pre-work need to be done before you, he seemed to want to have this meeting, I heard him say two weeks. Is that even reasonable?
This is all preliminary, so this is, here's a list of questions we need answered, take that. Here's a list of other things we need responded to, here's a list of other things that we're gonna need, soil, um, driveways, blah, 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 I mean, it's gonna be like any other development. But I just want to make sure we don't miss any components. But I just want to make sure we don't miss any components. Um, so it, this is going to be, put a present, meet with him and tell him, these are the ordinances we're going to need you to meet in order to come to the planning commission with your package. And so here, we're going to send him off and say, this is what you need to come back to me with, not to the group. Come back to me and then I'll make sure everything is completed, put my report together and then present it. It'll come in and be presented to you.
My impression from what he said in public comment was, he wanted to come have have this pre-meeting with a subgroup and review his project. And have a discussion, right?
Right.
But it sounds like this is a team needs to have meetings prior to that to come up with the requirements to give him.
No, no, because we don't know what he wants to do.
Oh, okay.
So this is preliminary. So if you read the ordinance, this is all preliminary.
Okay.
So we're we're going to sit down with him and he's going to come to us and say, here's what I want to do. And then we may need to meet with him. And then we may need to meet for a half an hour. Maybe we need a second meeting to say, okay, these are the components that he's going to need to do. Obviously, he's going to need a site plan review. Does he need a special use? Is he going to need a special use for his horse barn? Is he going to need a separate special use for um tomcat cottages? He wants to build in a PUD, which is a separate zone from his with his overlay. There's all these pieces.
Looking for here. So he, I did hear him correctly.
Yeah.
He wants to come share his plan so that this subgroup can understand what his plan in is. And then you guys as a subgroup will determine and give him a a list of what.
What does he need to prepare?
The requirements are going to be.
Yes.
Okay, I got that. So now we need one or two volunteers. Randy's been asked.
Let me cut to the chase here. He's got, he's he looks at a zoning ordinance that's really confusing. And he doesn't want to spend a bunch of money on some plans that that he's going to end up throwing out the window. It costs a lot of money when you're paying people a hundred and fifty bucks an hour to draw stuff. So that's what he wants to do is just take the temperature thing. This is where I'm thinking, this is what I read your ordinance to say, you know, is, and he wants to know if there's any problems right up front. So he doesn't have to spend a bunch of money coming here, getting all his team together. And then we say, no, you need a special use or something.
And I don't, and I don't want to go to him and say, here, you need to do this, this, this and this. And put it in a nice little package. And then all of a sudden he comes in and goes, well, I wanted to really do this. And I, you know, and then it's blue sky and then we're all over the place. I want to make sure that we have a clear vision of what he what he wants to accomplish. Because he's told me this and this and this, but.
And he's going to bring that to you for the, so you have something to start with.
And if you read through Article twenty-five, it states in there that that anybody that comes in can have a preliminary review of what their plans are. And so he has drawn plans.
Okay, so the objective here is, it sounds like Randy is agreeable to help with this. Okay, and and Al agreed, is that sufficient or is there another person?
I know the ordinance is, that's why I volunteered, but I guess I'm all.
Violate, I think only two of us, right?
Only two, Randy, off the planning.
Randy's not on the planning commission.
I don't have, I'm not a planning commissioner.
Yeah, he's not. Right, he doesn't count. So it sounds like Denise, you would be willing?
Okay, she's got just as much time as I got left and I know the ordinance is better. So why are you eliminating, Melinda? I'm just asking the question.
I have heard you volunteer. You are interrupting me. You are out of line. She deserves to be able to answer a question without being interrupted.
Uh, I would decline at this point. My, I I think it has to be someone that knows the ordinance is pretty much forward and backward. Uh, for this prelim. After that, then um. See how his development goes.
All right.
He can choose.
Well, then I would withdraw because I don't know a lot of, if that's a requirement, I don't know the ordinance forward and backward. I can see what he has and I can look at ordinances.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm going to be doing. Yeah. And I just, I want to make sure I've got enough eyes on it that we don't miss anything.
Yeah.
Takes a village and this is going to take, this is in the village, it's going to take the village. He wants new driveways, he wants cottages, he wants rentals, he wants, he's got a lot of ideas. And I'm not going to be the one saying yea or nay. I just want to make sure we put a package of what he needs to compile for us together.
And we'll get the senior member here, do you have any input?
Um, I need, I don't know that we have, besides Randy, I don't know if we have a person here that knows the ordinance forward and backward.
The the other thing that I will be doing.
The draft here.
And knowing that this is up and coming, I will probably be required to get a planner. And he's working right now with Gordy Frazier. And I know that we as a a township need a planner. I mean, Randy's willing to do a lot or some, but some of our bigger projects, he's kind of told me he doesn't want to be super overly involved. But but if this rolls out six months from now and he starts implementing and we need a Gordy Frazier type planner involved or engineer.
Or engineering as well.
It's the engineering and stormwater and some of that other stuff. Because it just depends on what is actually approved. So there there may be a requirement to bring on a firm of some sort, so.
And our ordinance provides for the developer paying for that.
Yes. It's called a performance guarantee and it just helps facilitate with those added expenses.
Something like a planned unit development, please get a little.
He he has lots of ideas.
Okay, so I think.
He owns a very, he owns a very large pond of of acreage in his pond. And he has a conservancy on the property and a horse barn. But that's, but anyway, so Randy and Al are my two people.
Yeah, so this is the question is, everybody thinks this is a good idea for us to engage in this. This group of people has to agree to support that and then agree on a reasonable timeframe to do that. So Al, are you still in?
Yes.
Thank you. And Randy is a yes. The question is, is do we put an additional planning commission number on there?
Uh, Randy, are the, is this latest back page you just gave us with the zoning ordinance? Is that the zoning ordinance that we need to look at?
Yeah, yeah, minus the tweaks were talked about, but yeah.
But there's no other document that needs to be over.
God, I hope not.
And to be honest, and we can't even reference those new ordinance numbers. You have to use the original ones that are online.
But to, um, but to uh, have the document in front of me in some kind of form that could be read and understood. I could, right, I could use that document to study.
I would be myself, I mean, rather than pulling up these two binders here and trying to.
But I'd be willing, um, uh, but uh, we need to postpone as long as we can because I really am going to need to read and read.
You know what, but if it's a matter of him coming in, until he comes in and says, this is what I want to do, how do you know what you need to read? And that's the.
You guys are making this way harder than it is.
You know, when somebody walks in my office, I never know what they want. It's, I'm flying by the seat of my pants part of the time. And and I have to ask a lot of questions and and that'll give us that opportunity to ask questions. And then we can prepare something in writing and get it back to them.
Oh, right, so we're going to have to give them an answer.
Oh, God, no. God, no, this is all prelim. You know, and if it takes us a month, it takes us a month. And this is just, normally I would be the one doing all of these things. So this is a unique situation. So, and I appreciate any and all help I can get on this.
So I think we, I committed that we would give them a call back about, I mean, I think, you know, it'd be good if you guys could agree on some dates before you.
I was thinking maybe uh, three weeks from tomorrow. But that's the Thursday before Labor Day weekend. Okay. Any particular time during the day?
What, what week is that?
Or does it need to be an evening?
Or last thing of the day would be work for me.
You like first thing in the, I like first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-nine.
So it's like, is eight AM too early for you? So I think it's what the. She likes six thirty. I've been in here at five, six thirty, five, six in the morning.
Nice and quiet. So can somebody pull out your phone, look at the twenty-ninth of, I think it's the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of uh, of uh, August?
The twenty-eighth is a seminar, so you're not going to want to do it then, Deb, are you?
That's Wednesday?
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that.
It's a Thursday.
The seminars, the twenty-eighth, oh crap.
Twenty-eighth is a seminar.
Is it possible to have like a Gordy Frazier with that meeting too, or?
Um. Gordy Frazier, I think, is going to be at that meeting because.
Oh, okay.
They're they're working with him already. So, and so that's where we'll learn a lot. This is an informational preliminary, you know.
All right, I think we got it, folks. Twenty-ninth, eight AM, you're communicating that to Mike Sherman?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, Deb.
Is that the twenty-ninth is a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Okay, that is not the same day as the meeting, the training, the training's the twenty-eighth. So eight AM on the twenty-ninth of August, that's what I'll go back to him. And that's at Doug Mansfield and the other components. I figured that gives him sufficient time to get up to speed and and um. Keep it moving.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next item is uh, keynotes to share at township board meeting. Uh, the one thing I would say, Heidi, is you need to make sure you tell them that we're getting real close on the zoning ordinance.
Uh, I haven't, we haven't had a meeting.
I know, this is information for you to take to the township.
I understand that, but I'm taking it, I'm taking this besides last meeting also.
Okay.
All right, so I'm adding this to what I'm already putting in the packet.
Okay.
But I have to do it verbally because my packet stuff's already in.
All right, but it's just that I, am I right, you guys? We're getting very close on the zoning ordinance. And so we expect to complete it next month and be able to send it for legal review.
I think I already told them that, but I'll reiterate it.
Um, I don't, if Rachel was here for church, she'd be prodding me. We might have to have a joint meeting at this point, I don't know. Right, I'm not sure how they would feel about that. Maybe you could ask them that question.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else that?
Will the meeting be in the daytime or the nighttime?
I think you should just find out if they're amenable to it. I think we usually meet in the evening.
Yeah, because I, Mike can make it and the other ones that are working can can make it.
All right. Does anybody have anything else for the township board meeting?
Would you, would everybody be able to change the time to six? Because they all work till five. I'm trying to tell you the issues they give me back verbally. I just need a little bargaining room because they're not so happy about them.
Well. Take their temperature, see if they want to meet in that, okay? Um, EC action items, I think we've already captured these. Um, agribusiness event, uh, Denise?
Yes.
Do you have a quick summary for us?
Yes, I do.
You sent us a lot of info.
Yeah, I I gave you the program with the concept and speakers. Uh, I I find that most useful when um, you go to a program like this and you want to get more information. You have a question, you know how there's that, that surge of people going up to people and asking, you know, you have three minutes. So I just go up and introduce myself and say, you know, I have a question, I'd like to be able to contact you later. And do you have a good contact? You know, give a business card and they give you one and then you can call. They know that this, there was a person, but they may not remember you. But then when you call, they have like ten or fifteen minutes of their time versus like, you know, thirty seconds. So and if you have any questions, I would kind of look at uh, the people that um. Municipal examples, planning and zoning for agri tourism is elusive form and function. There was three people. One was Jen Cram, Director of Planning and Zoning for Peninsula Township. Uh, she discussed how in her township, there was how some of the board pushed back against agri tourism. And uh, eventually they came around. So uh, you know, just find out maybe how they did it over there. I'm probably going to call some people, but I was waiting till after this election. Because most of, most of the offices would have been busy. So if you look at all the notes, uh, you can read through and look at them. There, most of them uh, are self-explanatory. I I took notes, but uh, this outline is from Jalen McCloy. She's experienced GR, Grand Rapids. So she's in marketing, she's a marketing partnership manager. So her perspective of the whole summit presentation would be from a marketing standpoint, a business view. Mine would have been like, oh, you know, more of an individual farming aspect of how someone did it. But it wouldn't be how to market and uh, and agri tourism to me is marketing. The only thing that she did not put in here that I had stood out in my mind was under um, Kamba U's uh, presentation. He has a op, an operation up here um. Petoskey, I'm saying. But he said that um, a farmer needs an outside source of income. Which to me, every, almost any farm that's been in the, in the family for generations. It's someone in the family has a job in a factory or nursing or something, a teacher to um, support the family in those lean years. Or um, one person, uh, Nine Bean Row, Rose, uh. That guy's phenomenal. Uh, he's in Leland County and he has several patents. So uh, you know, there's something on the outside. You just can't be, unless you have six to thousand, six hundred to thousand acres, you know, you really need some other source of income. But that's it. It was a great, um, I thought it was great uh, program. It's their first annual, so maybe next year someone else would want to go. No one from um, our, the side of the township of Grand Traverse County, mostly Leon, Leland or Charlevoix or something like that, but it was the Northwest region, so. I don't, it would be nice if someone from this area could go, but they'd have to be, you know, willing to do it. Have something to talk about that they were successful at.
So was it a, it was a two-day thing, wasn't it Denise?
It was two days. The first day was the fun day. I didn't go on the fun day. Uh, the first day was, that was limited to a hundred and twenty people. And you got to tour all these different farms and end up at a farm club for the cocktail hour. And, well, it wasn't twenty, it was like sixty people at a hundred and twenty dollars a person. And that's why I didn't go. But, you know, I would have loved to have gone uh, on that part, but I did the um, program.
Well, that's a, I don't know, man, this sounds like a really neat thing. If you could get a, even a couple of farmers to go with you next year. And I think, I think it seems like a great.
Can show them that this is working here, maybe it worked there, maybe it worked here.
I think it sounds like a a great, I don't know who all were the people that attended. But it seems like it would be a great opportunity.
It it was, the, I mean, we don't have time because it's quarter to eleven. But if anybody wants to talk about some of the presenters, um, I'll just go like uh, uh, Nine Bean Rose over in Leland County, he doesn't have a lot of acreage. I mean, I think he said like ten acres, I'm, I can't. But they have a commercial bakery and then they have another off-site retail. He made three hundred and fifty thousand croissants last year. And I'm like, how do you even do that? But uh, you know, he is very good about working with other farmers and getting things and. He's very, very, everybody that I've talked to about him in particular said that he's just a brilliant person and and farming. Uh, he does have, he runs a good business and he's always looking for new opportunities, so. Anyway, that's it.
Well, thanks for the report. Anybody have any more questions for Denise? Okay, Randy, last but not least, parking continuing education out of park.
Yeah, that's a great thing to end up on, isn't it? There's just a bunch of links in there, you can click on any one of those, like, get a quick video about how parking requirements have changed. And it's just kind of useful information, I think. I think our parking standards are probably copied from someplace else thirty, forty years ago. And they probably need to be updated, but it just kind of describes, it's really interesting, it sounds stupid to talk about parking requirements. But it's really interesting if you, there's a number of those links there. There's a professor from California that's made a name for himself looking at parking. looking at parking requirements across the country and he's kind of entertaining too. So you might want to you, there's like, there's like nine parking spaces for every one vehicle in the United States. Which, yeah, I mean, it's, it's facts like that, that talk about how we're overparked everywhere, you know, and, and how, where those standards came from.
What does overpark mean? Too many parking spaces?
Yeah, that we required too many or oftentimes like big boxes put in way more than they need because they want to have the appearance that there's plenty of parking here. You know, like a Walmart or Meyer or whatever oftentimes, you know, put in way more than they need because they want to you know, it's, it's almost a marketing kind of dimension to them.
If the space is too full, you won't go in and say, well
Yeah, it's too congested. I don't want, I can't find a parking spot or whatever, but um you know, but anyway, it's just interesting. I, I think if you, there's some of them are just like ten minutes long, so it's not a, not a big time commitment. There's one that's an hour long, but if you, if you're really interested, but
New Year's Eve.
Well, we used to, we used, we used to joke that they have the, for the, the hundred-year parking event, you know, that, that instead of a hundred-year floodplain, which is what you'd normally have, it's a hundred-year parking event where once every hundred years, you're going to fill the parking spot, fill the parking lot.
All right. Any further comments that you're waiting to share?
Do we extend our meeting or do we just say, everybody want to keep going?
We did.
Okay.
I think we're at the end of the agenda. No, we didn't. Am I supposed to do that at a certain hour?
Three hours.
Free? Thank you. You know, I didn't put that on my agenda. What happened to my agenda? All right, public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Um, no, nobody in the hall? Any of you have a public comment? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at ten fifty.
Ten forty-eight, I'm sorry.
Then roll call, please, Lewis.
What's that?
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
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 Peaton.
Yep.
I know we're talking about it.
Oh, get my legs moving again.
She was running around and then she said she was going to swing by your house.
Well, I think it's going to help, you know, get that master plan finalized and done and all, the board for approval. And then I think we take
They actually only have to approve to distribute.
You know, we take our worst problem child and say, okay, this meeting. And then do one, this, I think if we do that
You mean the different aspects that we
Yeah, I think we're going to take that short-term support, right? This meeting, everybody's bringing the cause.